Good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody to the public hearing for the planning and zoning for Tuesday, September 28th, 2021. If everyone could please make sure they have their phones muted. And at this time, we'll do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. At this time, I'll ask the secretary to read that public notice.
To be published in the Journal of Choir, Thursday, September 16th, 2021, and Thursday, September 23rd, 2021, South Windsor Planning and Zoning Commission. Notice is hereby given that there will be a public hearing on Tuesday, September 28th, 2021, at 7:00 PM in the council chambers of the South Windsor Town Hall to consider the following. One, application 21-39P, Kilkenny Heights II, request from Manorino Builders, Inc. for reapproval of the special exception to Section 7.14 and site plan approval for an open space subdivision of 21.5-plus acres to create a total of 12 new lots on property located at R024 and 420 Abbey Road and 248 Masco Road, A-30 and RR Zones, previously approved October 30th, 2020. Number two, application 21-40P, South Windsor Stone and Landscape Supply, LLC, request to the expand the special exception granted to Article 4, Table 4.1.1A, for a landscape material sale and storage business to include a topsoil screening operation located at 287 Strong Road to include a portion of the property at 275 Strong Road and site plan modification for the combined properties I-zone. Number three, application 21-47P, Revolution's Outdoor Field Expansion Temporary and Conditional Permit, request for a one-year permit to create additional outdoor multipurpose recreational fields 240 feet by 400 feet to accommodate league play on property located west of 60 Bidwell Road on 195 Governor's Highway I-zone. To view this meeting, please tune into Channel 61, if your provider is Cox Cable, or go to gmedia.SWAGIT.com/live. Copies of the application are on file in the office of the town clerk, in the planning department, and online at www.southwindsor CT.gov/PlanningDepartment/Pages/PlanningAndZoningCommission-Applications. At this hearing, interested parties may be heard by calling into the meeting, and written comments by the public will be received by mail or email. Persons who may require an accommodation can contact staff Monday through Friday, 8:00 AM to 4:30 PM, at 860-644-2511, extension 329. Bart Pasakos, Beth Pasakonis, Chairman, Planning and Zoning Commission.
Thank you very much. Our order of business tonight will first be to hear from the applicant, then we will hear from town staff, then we will hear from members of the public, first those in favor, and then those against or having questions or concerns, and then we will hear from commissioners. We are light a commissioner tonight. Commissioner Flag is not here, so Commissioner Cavignero will sit for Commissioner Flag. Okay, our first item on our public hearing agenda is application 21-39P, Kilkenny Heights II. Good evening. It's your... Please speak into the microphone, maybe tap on it. Is it on? Okay.
Yes, it is. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, much better. If you could just speak into it, though, or move it in front of you if you can, or...
No problem. Good evening, Commissioner Basconis and commission members. For the record, my name is Robert Manorino, and I'm here this evening representing Manorino Builders, Inc. I also have with me Dana Steele, the design engineer from JR Russo Associates, and we're here tonight to discuss the reapproval of application 21-39P, Kilkenny Heights II. I'm going to give just a quick overview of how we got here today, and then I'm going to have Dana come on up and present the application. Many of you are familiar with this. As the record showed, this was approved back in October of 2020.
You're wandering away from the microphone.
I'm sorry, as an open space subdivision, and for a total of 12 lots. As we did apply for extensions to file the MyLARS, we were not able to and decided not to file the MyLARS based on the unusual circumstances due to COVID and the general climate and environment that we're in at this time, and some additional unusual hardships. So we are here tonight to talk about the reapproval. With that said, this is the same application, the exact subdivision plans that were approved on October 20th, with a different application number. One thing that has changed is Manorino Builders, Inc. owns the land now. Before that, we did not own the land in the original application. It is also my understanding, after speaking with Michelle Leip and Jeffrey Folger, that the following approvals still remain in place, which would be the wetlands approval, which I believe is a five-year approval, the WPCA approval, and also, and I might not be saying this properly, but the open space recommendation from the town council and the open space task force. And if that's not quite right, I'm sure Michelle can clean that up. In addition, as of yesterday, there are no additional comments from the planning department that I'm aware of, or from the engineering department, or emergency services. All those previous approvals and comments are still in play. And if there's something that's changed since yesterday, I'm sure Michelle will let us know. I'd also, just to like to submit for the record, as part of this application, the three public hearings that we had, which are the minutes of the meeting, I don't know if you'd like me to hand that to you, Michelle? Okay. Okay, so we hand that in there. I also wanted the commission to know that if they do reapprove the subdivision, we will move to file the MyLARS, so that we will not be coming back and put more time into this. With that said, I'll just hand over the presentation to Dana Steele from JR Russo Associates. He's prepared to do a full presentation, and if you decide that you want a little bit less information, just let us know. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Dana Steele. I'm a professional engineer with JR Russo and Associates, and I'm here tonight to represent and explain this application for Kilkenny Heights II, 12-lot open space subdivision on Masco Road in South Windsor. I want to start by just giving you a brief summary of the history. Rob kind of touched on some of the things, but I just want to elaborate a little bit more on them, the process that how we got to this point before you this evening. We had originally submitted, come before this commission on October 15th, 2019, with an informal application to determine whether an open space subdivision or a conventional subdivision was most appropriate for this property. And the commission, your commission at the time, decided that an open space subdivision was preferred. And the reasons for that are numerous. First, the open space subdivision had fewer lots. The open space subdivision had obviously more open space, and there was less road for the town to maintain. So all in all, it was a clear benefit of the open space subdivision. And that pre-application conference that we had with you back in October of 2019 met the requirements of your Section 7.14.3. Then in November of that same year, we came back to you with an informal request regarding an additional question regarding the layout of the development. You may recall that we came because we wanted to know whether you preferred us to extend Masco Road all the way to Abbey Road, or to stop short and just extend the cul-de-sac in a straight shot to the north. And through the process of that discussion, again, this commission determined that they preferred the through road. This was also the recommendation of your staff, and the reasons for that, just to reiterate, were improved traffic circulation, improved emergency services access, school bus access, and consistency with your plan of conservation and development, which encourages connecting roadways. After that, we continued with our application to the inland wetlands commission. As Rob mentioned, we received a wetland approval in January of 2020. That approval was for a 13-lot subdivision. At the time, we had 13 lots when we came in with our application to you. It was also originally 13 lots, and then that was reduced down to 12 lots through the process of the planning and zoning approval. And in consultation with your wetland agent, Jeff Folger, we agreed that because the reduction in lots was less intensive, and there was less activity in a regulated area, that our wetlands approval was still valid. And so we continued and proceeding to you for the approvals after that wetlands approval. The next step, as Rob mentioned, was to meet with the open space committee, in which they also agreed and determined that the open space that was available for us to provide was desirable. The reasons for that were that it preserved woodland areas. It was contiguous to existing town open space. It preserves scenic views. You can actually see Hartford from the highest point of that open space area. And for these reasons... Oh, and finally, you'll notice on the color plan there, it's on the board to my right, and also on the screen behind you, that there is a power line running through the western side of that open space area. And there is a access road that follows the power line, and so that access road actually provides another way of access into the existing open space in this open space as well. So it really worked out well from an open space perspective. And so for these reasons, the open space committee and the town council agreed that this open space, they would accept it if you approved this application. And so that determination met the requirements of your Section 7.14.7. Then a public hearing took place with this commission, and on October 13th, 2020, you approved this subdivision for 12 lots. During the process of that approval, there was some changes that were made to the plan prior to your approval, including the reconstruction of Abbey Road to address a sightline issue. We are raising the elevation of Abbey Road where the road meets up with Abbey Road in order to improve sightlines, so that if you look to the north, to the right, as you're leaving the development, you can see over the crest of the hill, and we can fully comply with the intersection sight distance requirements for the design speed of that road. We also eliminated one lot. As I mentioned before, it was originally a 13-lot subdivision. It's reduced down to a 12-lot subdivision, so it was 12 lots instead of 13. We added a sidewalk on both sides of the road. That was another requirement. On the portion of the road that's parallel to Abbey, there's sidewalks on both sides. On the portion of the road that's perpendicular to Abbey Road, sidewalk's still on just one side. And then lastly, I'll note that as a part of that approval back in October of 2020, the commission agreed to reduce the open space access width from 50 feet to 25 feet, and we'll be asking you to do that again. The reason for that you granted that waiver was because the existing open space that we are connected to already has a full access. And as an additional consideration, we provided some additional parking in the Stormwater Basin Parcel A here, that's owned by the town, some additional parking that could be used for open space parking. So we offered that as an amenity. After your approval in October of 2020, we went to Water Pollution Control Authority, received their approval for the sewer. They approved the sewer connection in November of that year. And as Rob mentioned earlier, after that, the Manorino Builders purchased the property. So that is the only change in this application from the one that you approved in October to what we have before you this evening, is it's now owned by Manorino Builders. So with that summary done, unless you have any questions about that or would like me to elaborate any of that, I'd like to move on to a description of the project before you. Okay. This is, as I said, a 12-lot open space subdivision. I think the approval said 11 new lots, but that's 11 new lots plus the one existing lot. There is an existing lot of record right up near the cul-de-sac of Masco Road that's already a building lot. So it's a total of 12 lots, but it's 11 new lots. So just want to make sure that that's clear. The existing parcel is actually two pieces of land that total 21.58 acres. We're proposing 12.75 acres of that to be dedicated as open space, and that's the area on the eastern portion of the property. So it's over half of the property being designated as open space. And in addition to the open space, we're also providing a conservation easement over the only wetlands on the property, this isolated wetland here in front of lots 1, 2, and 3. Or not in front of, but on lots 1, 2, and 3. This subdivision, this particular regulation, you require a minimum lot size of 20,000 square feet. Our average lot size is 23,000 square feet. Our largest lot is 33,751 square feet. We are proposing an extension of Masco Road approximately 1,130 feet out to Abbey Road, per your recommendation or preference when we met informally. Sidewalks are provided on both sides of Masco Road in the extension, in this portion that is parallel to Abbey Road, and then on one side, on the portion that's perpendicular to Abbey Road. And we'd like to note again, as it was noted during the last hearing, that your Parks and Rec Department has agreed to maintain the sidewalk along the Parcel A, the town-owned Stormwater Parcel, and along the frontage of this existing parcel. It's owned by the McColskys, 416 Abbey Road, in recognition that they don't have to shovel this sidewalk. Parks and Rec is going to shovel it. And that agreement was that they would shovel it as long as the McColskys were there. If they sold the property to the next owner, then that would revert to the new homeowner. So that was an agreement between the town, and we appreciate that accommodation to lessen the impact to the neighbor. Regarding the grading of this property, we have made attempts to grade this property to minimize the impacts to the site, to preserve as much of these mature trees as we can along the perimeters of the site, and we are doing that through a balancing of the cuts and fills, cutting on the east side of the road, filling on the south side of the road, and having a balanced site for grading. And we are also minimizing our disturbance along the northern boundary. You can see this portion of the road that's perpendicular to Abbey Road, as in a butter here, the riches, and they're concerned, obviously, about their buffer from this. And so one of the things we're doing is we are not fully grading the shoulder of that road in order to maximize the amount of trees that are preserved along that boundary. And so we are sensitive to that, and we've designed this to try to accommodate that as much as possible. A landscape plan's been provided, and I probably should pull it up. This color plan is helpful, but I'm going to switch over to our subdivision plan. There it is. All right, if I move ahead to my glasses here. To our landscape plan, you'll see here that we are proposing numerous street trees along the frontage of the lots, and so those are going to be preserved within a conservation easement. We're also providing buffer plantings within conservation easements on the lots that abut existing residents. So here's Lot 1. Here's some arborvitae plantings and a conservation easement along there. Here's Lot 12, same thing, conservation easement and arborvitae's here on Lot 6, the same thing, as well as Lot 3, which abuts the Stormwater Basin in this parking area. So we've got some plantings there. In addition to those buffer plantings within conservation easements, we're also preserving the existing trees and vegetation along the open space parcel with a conservation easement along the backs of Lots 6 through 12. In addition to that, we're providing supplemental screening within the existing remaining trees and vegetation that abut the properties on Abbey Road that are closest to the Stormwater Basin. So you can see these dots here. Those are supplemental plantings, and that'll be coordinated with your staff to make sure that we've provided a good screen from our proposed Stormwater Basin. Additional screening has been added to the property across the streets from Abbey Road, 427. You can see additional plantings here meant to screen from view of the roadway. That was one of the conditions of your last approval, as well as additional plantings that will be coordinated with the property owner here at 416 Abbey Road, the McColskys again. So additional plantings along this will be coordinated with the property owner. So that's the landscaping plan. With regard to traffic, I'm going to take you back to... Take you back to our sightline plan. TESERA Engineering provided a report to you that... TESERA Engineering provided a report to you that was included with this application. The report demonstrates that the road system that will be contributing to this new connection to Abbey Road includes 38 existing lots and our 12 proposed new lots, a total of 50 residential homes that will have potential to use this driveway. The report indicates that our development will produce an additional 13 trips during the peak hours. 13 trips is not a lot of trips for a roadway system. For this portion of the road here that's connecting to Abbey Road, the report indicates 11 and 12 trips during the peak hours. So again, a very small amount of trip generation from this development, not a significant impact. One of the main concerns with regard to traffic on this project was the sightline at Abbey Road. As I mentioned, we proposed to raise Abbey Road so that you can see over the crest of the hill here to the north of our intersection, and you can see traffic that's coming south towards you. And this distance that we've achieved, 445 feet, is known as an intersection site distance. And this intersection site distance is a distance that a vehicle needs in order... If a car pulls out of here, is turning left, car pulls out, and there's a car coming from the south, at 445 feet, that car traveling at the design speed has enough time to not have to brake for that car that's pulling out. They can just take their foot off the brake and coast and wait for that car to accelerate and then keep going. So intersection site distance is really not a safety matter. It's a matter of convenience, a matter of efficiency. It's a matter of the intersection working efficiently so you're not impacting the flow of traffic on Abbey Road. And that's what we've done to meet that requirement, and so we're in full compliance with engineering standards for this intersection. The conclusion of the traffic report is that with these sightline improvements, the project will not have a significant impact to traffic, which is an important conclusion based on your approval criteria. Regarding utilities for the site, just briefly, I'll move back to our plan here, our utility plan. The stormwater for the site, it flows from east to west towards Abbey Road. The slope is about, average of about 15% currently, and it just flows across this area to Abbey Road. There's some ponding that occurs in this wetland area, of course, and this area overflows and it concentrates, and it comes down this corridor here, right, and concentrates right here at Abbey Road. That's what it's doing now. That's what the site's doing now. What we're proposing to do is install a stormwater basin in this location and collect all that water that comes off this hill and detain it in this stormwater basin, hold it back so that we have less water reaching Abbey Road than is reaching it today. So we're going to be improving the stormwater to Abbey Road in regard to the peak flow. And this basin was designed for a two-year storm, a 10-year, a 25, and a 100-year storm. The basin also provides water quality treatment. So not only does it hold back water, and so you don't have an increase in water, it also makes it cleaner. And so by taking this water through a stormwater basin, we're complying with DEEP guidelines, and we are improving water quality. Also, as part of the design process review with staff, we added yard drains on each of the lots along the east side of the road so that we don't have lot-to-lot drainage. So we don't have Lot 12 here draining onto Lot 11, 11 onto 10, and going through their backyards. Instead, everything's funneled to yard drains in the front tied into the drainage system. So that was another change that was made through the approval process. So that's storm drainage. Sanitary sewers, as we mentioned already, WPCA has approved the sanitary sewer connection. Water service. This is served by Connecticut Water. Right now, the water company has a water main on Masco Road, and we're going to be extending that all the way to Abbey Road and looping up with the main on Abbey Road. And what that does is it provides connectivity to their two networks, and it actually is going to improve their pressure and equalization of that pressure, and it's going to improve their service of the whole area. So it's actually an improvement that we're providing. Additionally, hydrants will be provided along the road, and those are, as requested by your fire marshal. And so we've provided those in the locations that he has indicated. Underground telephone, data, and electric services will also be provided, so there'll be no overhead power lines, no utility poles in this development. Streetlights are provided as directed by staff, a police chief, and those locations also have been coordinated with your staff and are shown on the plans. So that's a summary of the projects that we are proposing. If you have any questions about the details of that, I'd be happy to answer them. If not, I'd like to take time to go through the approval criteria that you're required to consider when making an application. Would that be acceptable?
I think we're all set with that. If all the commissioners are fine, okay.
Okay. I'd just like to then just note for the record that there are 14 special exception review criteria. As we presented at our last meeting, we've demonstrated why we comply with each one. It was also articulated in the cover letter that came with this application. So if you've had a chance to review that, then you know what our position is on that. I just want to mention one other item that was not in the cover letter. Section 7.14.10 of your regulations includes additional considerations for applications, and I wanted to just state for the record that we comply with those as well. There were six of them. If I could, I'll just mention them briefly since they're not in the record. The first is impacts to immediate abutters and surrounding neighbors in comparison to impacts to a conventional subdivision. Well, this was already addressed through that pre-application hearing where we came and we discussed, do you want a conventional subdivision, or do you want an open space subdivision? Your decision was you wanted an open space subdivision, and so I believe that you've already met that criteria. We've already demonstrated that the open space subdivision has less impact to the neighborhood. The second is maintenance of agricultural activities on the site. That doesn't apply since there are no agricultural activities. Third, future maintenance of special habitat flora and fauna areas. And while we are providing a substantial area of open space and conservation easements, when we went through that process, our environmental expert, George Logan, did an assessment of the open space. He didn't find any special habitat areas on the property that needed to be preserved. So we feel we meet that requirement as well. Number four, the impact on ground and surface water quality. And as I've mentioned regarding to the storm drainage design, we are providing a modern storm drainage design in accordance with DEEP recommendations, the Stormwater Quality Manual reviewed by your town engineer. And we believe that we're going to be both controlling water and treating water and cleaning it, as we've demonstrated. Number five, protection of historic sites. We're not aware of any special historical significance of this property that would need to be preserved. And then finally, number six, the degree to which recreational corridors are employed to facilitate the creation of a townwide network. And this is the one that is the most obviously clear benefit here, is that we have an existing open space parcel. We're continuing it. We're continuing it. We're connecting those, and we are creating that corridor that your regulations envision as being something desirable. So appreciate your time. And just one last thing in conclusion. In your approval in October, you attached 30 conditions to the approval, and all of those conditions are still relevant and applicable, and we are agreeable to them. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we'll turn to our town staff, our Director of Planning, Michelle Leip.
Thank you. I will have provided you a copy of my report in your packet. It's pretty similar to what we had last year, so I'm going to kind of give you an abridged version. I think the applicant did a pretty good job covering the details. So just for the record, this is a request of Manorino Builders for a special exception to Section 7.14 and site plan approval for an open space subdivision of 21.5 acres to create 11 new lots in the reconfiguration of an existing lot on property located RO24, 420 Abbey Road, 248 Masco Road, A30 in RR zones. As was presented, the commission saw this both as a conventional and open space subdivision to make a decision on what direction the applicant should go. They directed an open space subdivision. They also saw this related to the cul-de-sac extension, whether or not you wanted to come all the way out. The commission directed the applicant to come all the way out with Masco Road. The applicant did receive approval October 2020, did not file the milars in the allotted timeframe under the law, and therefore is back in front of you with the application. And these plans do reflect your approval, and the approval conditions have been incorporated into them. So just going to point out a couple of things that have been incorporated, and then I just kind of want to review some of the approval conditions that may be still pertinent if moving forward. So just again, for the record, the minimum lot size in these zones are A30, 15,000 square feet, 20,000 square feet in the RR zone. Minimum lot size being proposed with these developments, 19,000 square feet in A30 and 20,000 square feet in the RR zone. Under the open space formula, the applicant would be able to have 12 new lots. They are proposing 11. That was a change from the original application, changed through the application process last time. This application did go through the normal review of the open space task force. It was also represented to the Town Council with a favorable recommendation from the task force. It meets a lot of the goals, connecting other open space that we do have here. I will put on the record the February 5th, 2020, resolution from the Town Council to the Planning and Zoning Commission, with their recommendation being that it become town-owned open space. And that is something that the planning and zoning can make a decision on as part of the process, whether it be town-owned open space, association open space, or some kind of combination thereof. So the recommendation is that it be town-owned open space. Couple of things the applicant looked for through the process was, as mentioned, we would look for a 50-foot access strip. They were proposing 20 feet originally. The commission decided on a 25-foot access strip. This is on the northern access up into the open space. It does connect up into existing open space that was gotten through the Zen Tree Farm application and the previous Kenny Heights application. The applicant did go in front of the Wetlands Agency, did receive approval. Their recommendations of bonds in the amount of 20,000 for erosion sedimentation measures, 25,000 for stormwater structures, $5,000 for plantings within the basins. Other approval conditions included conservation easements are required over the wetland areas and be placed on the deeds for lots 1, 2, 3, 4, and 6. And indicates any additional clearing from that is shown on the plans would require additional approvals. The applicant had originally proposed a sidewalk on one side of the road network. Through the approval process, you required sidewalks on both sides of Masco Road, on the north-south part of it, and then the part heading down to Abbey Road, one side on the southern side was required. It is true that the Town Parks and Rec Department would maintain that sidewalk kind of as a sunset provision until the property owner in the corner no longer owned that property. That was an agreement that we did have in place. Street trees are shown. The plan was prepared by a landscape architect. This plan does incorporate some of the other landscaping treatments you had asked for related to some screening treatment to the properties to the west, as well as some buffer treatments up against existing properties. This was approved by WPCA for the sewer approval. So I just want to review just a couple of the approval conditions other than the standard ones that we had requested the last time. We'd requested arborvitae plantings in front of the property at 427 Abbey Road at a location agreed to come between the property owner and developer to minimize automobile light trespass, and that is the road directly across from where the new roadway comes out... I'm sorry, the house directly across from the new road. All conservation easements in open space property shall be marked in the field with open space and conservation easement metal property markers provided by the town to the satisfaction of the environmental planner. In accordance with Section C1G of the subdivision regulations, a waiver of 25 feet has been granted to allow an open space access of 25 feet. Dust control measures shall be implemented onsite, and watering of the site shall be done on a regular basis. The existing stone wall adjacent to 249 Masco Road shall remain unprotected as part of conservation easement on Lot 1. The existing tree line along the northern property boundary shall be protected in the field. Efforts shall be made to preserve as many trees as possible. Any trees to be removed in that area shall be flagged by the developer and subject to review and approval of town staff. Once the access from Abbey Road is established to the extent feasible, all construction traffic shall use that as a primary entrance into the development, and the developer shall post wayfinding signage directing the public to the town open space and posting private property where appropriate to indicate the end of the public access for the recreation use. That completes my comments. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This time, we'll turn to our town engineer, Jeff Doolittle.
Thank you. All of my previous comments have been addressed, so I have no new comments on this application.
Okay. Thank you very much. And at this time, we will turn to members of the public. Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of this application? Please step forward, and I'll remind everyone that once you come forward, we should have a sign-in sheet up there, and if you could just introduce yourself to the commission. Anyone wanting to speak in favor? Do we have anybody who would like to speak against? Please step forward.
My name is Ed Machowski. I live at 416 Abbey Road in South Windsor. I have a couple of concerns about this project. One is the sidewalk issue. You have the sidewalk coming all the way down to Abbey Road. Why do you have that coming all the way down to Abbey Road? Wouldn't it be a good idea to have it coming down to the end of the property line of the builders, like they do on Fraser Fur Road and Masco Road, where it ends at the property line? Another concern that I have is, you say the town is going to take care of that sidewalk. To me, you're penalizing me. When I say that is, if somebody should fall walking down that sidewalk, who has the liability? The town or the property owner? Number two concern, you talk about raising that road. Is that going to affect my property drainage from my driveway? Is that going to raise the road where the water starts entering my establishment? Number three, I just heard that the builder was in favor of putting some kind of shrubbery or barrier along my property, low shrubbery, you know, old trees, old shrubs, to give me some privacy. That's my main concern. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to speak against or have questions or concerns? Please step forward. Did you? No? Okay. Hearing and seeing none, we'll turn to commissioners. Commissioner Kavignaro.
I just have a few things. Um, let me get this. There we go. I'm just curious on a few things. Looking at the map that we have over here, for example, I see a lot of it going through trees that are already there, for example. Do you have like an estimate on how many trees will be torn down, for example? I assume not, but I would just like to ask.
For the record, Dana Steele from JR Russo and Associates. No, we haven't counted the number of trees, but the plan shows the clearing limits is this scalloped line along the backside of Lots 6 through 12, and then it's this scalloped line here behind Lots 1, 2, 3, and 4, and then it wraps around the Stormwater Basin. So this area, and then along the northern boundary, you see again the scalloped line. All of these mature trees that are right along the boundary here that we've identified, the specific trees, those are all being saved. So I can't answer your question as far as specific count of how many, but it's a... We look back at the plan here, color plan. You can see that this site is mostly wooded. So these areas, there are significant trees that will be cut down, but there's no way to avoid that in a development like this. this.
Yeah, I wasn't looking for an exact number. I was just curious on an estimate, but, uh, next question is sort of links to that. I, I, I assume when this project goes through, um, it'll be planned really around, not planned around, but with the wildlife in mind, I just don't want to see anything happen. For example, again, that's just why I asked these two questions. I'm just concerned about the wildlife that is around there.
Sure. Well, the, one of the, the benefits of this type of development and open space subdivision is that we're preserving all of this wooded area. So in a conventional subdivision, which we looked at the process before, we'd be developing all of this area and there'd be much less open space. So there, so this is the, the best way to develop the property and yet maximize the, the things that, that you're talking about, preserving habitat area for, for animals. And, and the animals will, will have to relocate that are in this area and move over to the, to the portion of the open space that is, that is being preserved. And so, um, uh, you want to add anything to that, Rob, or?
Robert Panerino, in regards to the wildlife and the open space subdivision, we probably should, we probably should have shown the layout of the conventional subdivision, which is the existing zone, which took up quite a bit of the area. I know in the previous application, we actually did some numbers on how many acres are there and how many acres of trees that we were cutting. I don't have that number in front of me, but it is in the minutes, and we could, we could research that and, and get that for you, but it, it is minimal compared to the 23 acres, um, and there's 12 lots, so we're probably cutting about six acres of the 12 acres, and I'm, I'm using that number off the cuff if that's the kind of number you're looking for. Okay? And we did do an extensive, uh, open space study by George Logan, Logan, and he, uh, you know, he reviewed the wildlife and the corridor of how the wildlife run and water. There's no water source where we're building houses, so that, you know, typical the deer and what have you, they run along those water courses and what have you, and so does the habitat. So this was the best use of the property versus a conventional, which would have cleared quite a fit, quite a, quite a bit, and I think there would have been like six acres left over in open space or something like that. So I hope that answered your question.
It did, thank you. No, no other comments, thank you.
Commissioner LeBlanc.
Thank you. My concerns are certainly the gentleman who got up and spoke here, he has a few concerns about this development and water and sidewalks. Could you answer those questions for him?
Sure. So the, let's switch back again, our subdivision plan. So the, the intersection here of Maskel Road and Abbey Road, we are, we are, we are raising the, the grades here. You can see, here's, here's the driveway for, um, the, the gentleman that, that spoke. As you can see, by the time that, that we get to his driveway, the, the change in grade is ve, is very minimal. It's affected, this grade is actually meeting up with, with the grade here, so there's really very little change in the grade here. And you can see that from these contours that everything is flowing towards the road, and that's going to continue to be the case. So we're not directing any water onto his property. Everything is going to follow along the road as it, as it, as it does now, and we're not going to be changing that. And so if town engineer wants to elaborate or, or comment on that, he can, but I, I, I'm confident that it's not going to have any drainage impacts on his property. Thank you.
If it actually did have.
Thank you.
A drain, if there was a drainage problem, I'm sure the town engineer would make us address it, but we don't see that. In regards to the liability for sidewalk, I'm not sure I can really answer that question. What is the policy now for sidewalk? Because it is in the town right away. Michelle, on the liability of sidewalk? Or Jeff? Just to try to get that question answered, I'm not really sure.
It's, there's no policy with regard to liability. It follows state statute. In reality, the liability ends up being shared between the property owner and the town. The town is the bigger entity, so usually the town gets sued before any property owner gets sued.
Okay. All right, thank you.
As far as the placement of the sidewalk all the way down to Abbey Road, I know that the school transportation office felt very strongly not to do what was done on Fraser Fir, which is leave it short of the intersection.
Say that again?
The school transportation, Marlene over in, at the school felt very strongly that we don't do what was done on Fraser Fir, where we leave it short. We need to bring it down to the intersection for kids to be able to walk the intersections. She felt very strongly.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, I'm really having trouble understanding you with the mask, and I don't know how the mask, mic closer or something, if you don't mind repeating.
The school transportation office had a concern with how we left the sidewalk on Fraser Fir, not extending it down to the intersection, so they would not be in favor of us not extending it down to the intersection. For kids to get on a bus, they have to be able to walk to an intersection.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Only other concern I have, just looking at this, well, actually it's a good layout here, but you have that 90-degree curve, and it's no secret through town that there's more speeders than ever. I grew up in the corner of Dart Hill and Ellington Road, on the corner there, and when I was growing up there, the speed limit was at least 25 miles an hour coming down the hill, and we would have cars actually come through the, the 90-degree curve there that ended up in the guardrail, people's yards and all that, and it's happened at least a dozen times when I was a teenager. And they have since sharpened that curve over there, and of course, the cars go faster, but it's a different story, but, uh, just looking at this layout, I just had this concern about speed being a factor. You have this, this long stretch of road, and you have, of course, the easterly off of Abbey Road, and it's just, it's a true 90-degree corner. I'm okay sending a speed limit and all that, but I'm thinking there's probably should be some warning or even a rumble strip over there for that, and whether signage on the corner with the arrows is the town's responsibility or the developer, I'm not sure, but I think something needs to tell people that's a sharp curve there, because something's going to happen.
The commissioner LeBlanc, the, the plan shows stop signs at that, at that corner, both ways, so traffic will have to stop.
Good. I know I missed out, but thank you. That's, that's a huge help.
Okay, Commissioner Wagner.
Thank you. So I was going to raise the same issues about the drainage and sidewalk liability. The gentleman also spoke about shrubbery, but I think you said that you're going to work with him on, I don't know whether the shrubbery would be on his land or the land of the, of the development, but I think hopefully that can be worked out to give him the privacy he's looking for. There is this public access easement that actually takes a fair amount of the property of the so, house, of the properties on the eastern side of Maskel Road. Do we have, I mean, there're going to be actually members of the public enjoying that easement, but I'm wondering, the, the residents of those houses, will they have a sufficient buffer so they're not watching every kid and bicycle and whatever goes by there? What kind of, what kind of shelter do they have?
Right, so you can see the, the access road here that, that exists for the, the power lines, and here's the existing tree line next, that runs next to that, and here's our proposed tree line. So that distance there, you've got about 20 feet of, of remaining vegetation that will be preserved as, as a buffer, so we were sensitive to that. And there's a conservation easement there so that it can't be cut down, so it's, it's preserved.
Now, on the other hand, I'm a user of all of the different rail tries and things around, and people do like to actually connect their property to these kinds of facilities, so they would be within this conservation easement. We're not getting in trouble by providing a little trail to their backyard.
I, I guess, I don't know what the policy would be on that.
Yeah, actually, when conservation easements are put into place, there's actually a paragraph for the purpose, and we review that, and we can certainly make sure that gets included as part, part of the purpose.
So if I bought a house there and I wanted to.
Provide an access, a small access point, yeah.
An access point, I wouldn't have a problem?
Yeah, we'll, we'll make sure to note that and put that as part of the easement language.
Okay. And let's see, I, I just have a comment that, and you didn't bring this up, so I'll just say, this open space that you're providing actually connects to a whole lot of other open space in the, in the area, and I think that's a really important feature of the design of this, of the layout of this property. And, oh, one other thing, Mrs. Light provided, mentioned there were 30 conditions, or there used to be 30 conditions, but now there's only 27, so did we lose three somewhere along the way?
Uh, some of them had gotten incorporated, so they didn't need to be a condition any longer. One of them was a COVID related to the actual executive order. We were not going to have them work on Saturdays, but since that's no longer in effect, that one went away, so the ones that we lost are ones that were no longer valid.
Okay, great. That's all I have, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Bonzani.
Uh, thank you. Rob, this is probably for you. I know in the past, when we had the, the public hearing, the neighbors were really concerned about the dust control, um, as you guys were building, which they should be. You guys have a, a water truck? Is that what you're planning, just going up and down the road with a water truck?
Personally, we don't have a water, we personally don't have a water truck, but whatever site contractor we choose, we have a, a water truck, plus we're very familiar with putting down calcium, seeding our topsoil piles right away, always trying to stay on the better side of Jeff Folger, and, and of course, the engineering department. So we are, you know, he, we, we're aware, we don't like the phone, we don't want any phone calls either.
Yeah, I remember that, that was a big issue with a lot of the neighbors, and I know it says right here, dust control, but it, you know, I'm in construction and I, it gets pretty bad sometimes.
No, it's, it's not fun. Luckily, we have a lot of tree barriers, we have a lot of bit of, a lot of vegetation between, except for right behind the detention basin, um, we have, you know, a good amount of trees that we're not touching, so that's very helpful.
All right, and the last thing I have, the last thing I have is, I know there's two ways you can do this, is your first plan is, um, for Abbey Road, when all the trucks can come in, they're going to, they want them to come in through Abbey Road and not through the neighborhood, would you plan on just starting and building the road first thing and then do the, because that would make a big difference as far as where the trucks come?
I mean, as far as connecting to the cul-de-sac?
Yeah.
And cleaning that up? Well, we have to get our sewer from the cul-de-sac, and we've got to bring our water through there. Definitely will be bringing all our construction vehicles up through Abbey Road. We usually do the wings near the end, after most of the construction is done.
Yeah.
You know, so we try not to disturb that, that area.
No, I just mean like, are you just going to, you know, do the road first, pretty much like from?
Yes, and then we usually do the wings like one of the last things.
So a lot of trucks will be coming, not through the neighborhood.
We do have to go get the sewer and the water there, but if I remember correctly, the manholes are pretty close to the property line. But we usually, like I said, usually do those, those wings right near the end, and we'll, of course, be notifying the homeowners, you know, their driveways left to be, you know, extended, paved, all that other stuff, so.
That's all I have, because I remember that was a big issue with the neighbors back then, but thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Dexter.
Nothing new to comment on.
Okay, um, if the, was it engineer could come to the podium, please? Just real quick, the detention basin, wet or dry bottom? What's it designed for?
The, what, what design storms?
No, what's it designed for? Is it a wet or a dry bottom?
Oh, it's a wet, it's a wet pond.
Okay.
Yep.
Um, the Riches curb line, that is the extra long, how, when we go down that road after, is that going to be, how far back is it going to, back from the curb is it going to be cleared?
You're talking about the, the Rich property, the north?
No. Went to the south, the, the old Maskel Road, right about there, next one, next one down there, right there. So they want to know how our detention basin's going to affect their property.
Oh, no.
I think.
I'm, I'm talking.
He's talking about the Rich property.
Oh, I apologize, okay.
The Riches property.
Yep.
We talked about preserving, but I'm just wondering how far back from the curb is the vegetation going to be? Is there going to be a, like, one patch to mow or whatever?
So you, you've got a, um...
I, I don't want to see trees hanging out into the street, is what I'm trying to get to. Yeah, looking also for some type of snow shelf there.
Right, so, so there is an existing ditch that runs along this, this property here, and our plan was to leave that ditch in place and not touch it. That would be your snow shelf. And, and you see, there's a lot of trees along the boundary, some on the Riches property, some on, on our property, and we're preserving all of those. So, um, and that's because we're, we're shortening up that shelf and, and, and maintaining the ditch that's, that's there, so that we have as little impact to that, that, those trees as possible.
Okay. Remind me what the surface type is of the parking lot?
Gravel.
Or the parking area?
It's a processed gravel, processed aggregate.
Okay, awesome. The eight arborvitae's on the public, or next to the public way, are those protected by a conservation easement?
Along the open space access?
Yes.
Yes, that, that, that little dash line there is a conservation easement.
Okay. And, okay, um, that answers all my questions, thank you very much. Commissioner Foley.
I have no comment.
Okay, just didn't want to forget you. Commissioners, anything further? Any reason to keep the public hearing open? Hearing seen none, town staff, applicant?
No.
All set? Okay, then we'll close the public hearing at 8:00 PM, and we'll move on to our next public hearing. And Kilkenny is on for action later. Okay, so we're looking for application 21-40P, South Windsor Stone and Landscape Supply. If we could, Michelle, shut that light off, or does the applicant? Did the applicant have, do they have slides or?
Yes.
Oh, okay, so we gotta, I gotta have that light shining in my face. I should bring my welding shield. Uh-oh, Peter. It's collapsing society, Peter.
I'll open this one too. Okay. Let's get this stuff out of the way here. This, this, this. Okay. This. Yeah, just hit that down arrow.
Ready, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please.
Thank you. For the record, my name is Peter Alter. I'm a lawyer, practice law in Glastonbury, the firm of Alter and Purson. Here representing South Windsor Stone and Landscaping Supply, the Silvestri family is the owner and operator of this business that is located on the southerly side of Strong Road in the industrial zone. In addition to my remarks this evening, you'll hear from Glenn Miller of Design Professionals, as well as Peter DiMali may have some comments to add as well. We have an overall aerial view on display at the moment to orient the commission as to... Property consists of 2.29 acres, when you take into account both 275 and 287 Strong Road. One of the recommendations made by town staff was that these properties should be merged as part of this application process, and the owners have agreed to merge the properties into a single parcel if, in fact, this application is approved. Silvestries have owned this business and run it as a family business since 1947. It started in East Hartford and then moved to South Windsor as its permanent location. We have about 350 feet of frontage along Strong Road on the merged parcels. As I indicated, this parcel is zoned industrial, and the uses have been approved as part of a special exception process by this commission in earlier applications. It is necessary to take a few moments to review some of the history of the site, because this commission had a role to play in an earlier application that, that has significance with respect to the application that's presented tonight. In 2014, March 11th, 2014, this commission denied an application, which was in part to allow for the manufacture of topsoil on this site. That denial led to an appeal, and ultimately to a settlement, and ultimately to a stipulated judgment in Superior Court, which allowed the business to continue on this site, but not to allow the production, manufacture of, of topsoil. In its denial, and I've passed out to everybody, because some of you were on the commission then, but, but many of you were not, so I thought it would be helpful to just review this. The good news is that many of the concerns that the commission had in 2014 are really resolved and addressed in the application before you tonight. So, I want to take a few moments and just bring the commission up to speed on some of those matters. The first matter that the commission expressed was concerns about the proposed access driveways with respect to the proposal that you have before you this evening. The current driveway that services the facility is the only driveway that will be in use, so that the concerns that the commission had about a third driveway or utilization of the CL&amp;P right-of-way that is immediately to the east of the site are no longer matters to be concerned with. We have provided a truck-turning template to show how a truck will access and leave the site. That's been reviewed by town staff. Town staff had some comments, Jeff Doolittle had some comments, which we have adopted and have no issues with in terms of the comments that he raised. One was to create some signage that gave people directions as to how traffic will circulate on the site. So, we think that your concern in item number one has been adequately addressed in terms of safe vehicular maneuvering on the site. The second item that you raised is a concern that the existing site exceeds the bulk requirements. The plan that you have before you meets, and in fact, exceeds, all of the bulk requirements for the industrial zone. Area for a lot in industrial zone is a minimum of three-quarters of an acre. The site will be 2.29 acres when it's merged. Frontage is 100 feet. We have over 350 feet of frontage. All side yards, front yards, rear yards are satisfied by the plan that you have before you. In your industrial zone, impervious coverage is permitted to be 65%. The proposal before you has 53.8% impervious coverage. You allow up to 50% lot coverage in the industrial zone. The proposal is for 7.6% lot coverage. Parking spaces, seven would be required, 10 are provided. Parking lot landscaping, 5% is required. We have over 5% on the plan that is presented before you. So, that all of the bulk requirements, as referenced in that concern, concern number two in the denial letter, has been resolved. The, number three seemed to be much of the same, and again, all of the bulk requirements of the zone are met with respect to qualifying for a special exception and site plan approval. The visibility from public ways is, is part of your requirements. I believe it's section 2.11 of your Building Zone Regulations. Glenn Miller will speak to that, but I will represent to the commission that with the additional landscaping, as Glenn will describe, it will, nothing will be visible from the public way in terms of the storage facilities that are proposed. Substantial amounts of arborvitae are utilized in areas where there could possibly be the opportunity for view from any direction, including, although it's not from a public way, including the area to the east. Here, additional arborvitae are added in order to create additional screening. There is a residential property further to the east on the other side of the CL&amp;P right-of-way, and we wanted to add screening there as well. The stipulation that was entered into, that I provided you with a copy of for the record, indicates that the commission found that the activity as of the date of that approval was in substantial compliance with the zoning regulations, and therefore, and we're not aware at the present time that any zoning violations exist that would cause concerns at the present time. The principal concern with respect to adverse environmental impacts on the neighbors was a matter of dust and the tracking of mud. Since the last application, Mr. Silvestri has added an irrigation system to his site in order to control the dust in a more appropriate and consistent way. So, we think that that matter has been addressed as well. Number seven is an important issue. The Silvestries have utilized the Brick Company site as an opportunity for creating and manufacturing topsoil in the past. They've had a long relationship with the Brick Company to the north. They have been advised that that property is for sale, that the Brick Company will no longer operate there, and that the property will be disposed of, and that when that happens, they will be required to move away from that site. They will no longer have it available for the purpose of manufacturing topsoil. So, that they need to make a plan now as to how to continue that aspect of their business, and using a small screener on the site as we propose will allow them to continue one of the more successful aspects of their business, which is the manufacture of high-quality topsoil. So, that the opportunity of another site does not appear to be available with very little notice. When the property goes under contract and is sold, their arrangement will end, and they will have to cease using that property. Has a huge impact on their ability to conduct their business. We're not aware of violations of the ongoing process. We haven't, certainly haven't been noticed with any such violations. Michelle expressed some concern that the properties, the two properties that you see on the site plan should be merged, and Mr. and Mrs. Silvestri, that that was an appropriate action to take in response to her request, so that the properties will be merged. The lack of neighborhood acceptance is, is kind of an interesting question. We are in the midst of an industrial zone. We're in the heaviest industrial zone, really, in South Windsor. The houses that exist in the area were built in the 1940s and early 1950s, and the town rendered them non-conforming when they created the industrial zone throughout this entire area. And over the past 70 or 80 years, 60 or 70 years since those houses were built, what has occurred is, you know, some very substantial industrial development all around this little island of residences. And so, the neighborhood is an industrial neighborhood. It's not a residential neighborhood. The non-conformity here is the residential use. And so, it's difficult to talk about neighborhood acceptance when these houses are in the midst of the heaviest industrial activity in South Windsor. Truck traffic, noise, the moving of heavy materials, the kinds of things that CL&amp;P moves up and down its right-of-way, and the kinds of materials and equipment that all of these facilities use makes this a very successful industrial area, and certainly imposes something on, on the people who choose to live there. But it would be unfair, at least in our opinion, to impose a higher standard on the South Windsor sand and gravel operation than you have on all of the industrial development that has occurred in the area. And so, we would suggest that the neighborhood acceptance is really that the town decided that this is an industrial zone. The Silvestries didn't decide that. Their businesses are permitted use in this zone. The manufacture of topsoil is a permitted use in this zone, and so, it is contrary to those determinations made by the town to say that there should be some specific neighborhood invest, acceptance of the activity that goes on, on the site. The property has stormwater detention basin. It's down in the southwest corner. It's well-maintained, and it functions quite well to handle all of the stormwater drainage that is on the site. Those of you who've been out to the site know it's very flat, and so, there is no substantial runoff that isn't handled through the stormwater drainage system that is currently established on the site. So, we're not aware of any ongoing drainage issue in that regard. We think that the way that the Silvestries maintain this site and the tidiness of their retail and wholesale use, the use of the bins, the way they use them, is compatible with an industrial zone. It's appropriate for the use in that zone, and the screening that Glenn will describe adds further to the fact that from the street, you really can't see any of the storage of materials that occurs on the site. And finally, there was a concern that there would be an adverse effect on property values, and at least from my review, that is, does not appear to be the case. I'll submit for the record copies of the property cards for, property cards for the residential properties in the immediate area, and what you'll note is that through the assessment process and also through a couple of sales that have occurred, there's no indication that the property values of the surrounding properties have been adversely affected by this particular activity on site. Are they impacted by being in the middle of an industrial zone? That may very well be possible, and appraiser might very well suggest that a non-conforming residential use in an industrial zone has less value than that same residence in a residential zone. But in point of fact, there's no indication that the Silvestri operation has caused a diminution in value, and those of you who've been out to the site know that part of the approval that you gave as, as a result of the stipulation and the entry of a judgment in Superior Court, now I reference the approval that's dated February 1st, 2016. I provided a copy of that to the commission and to the record, indicates the following, that the operation at 287 Strong Road is in substantial compliance with the approvals of the town of South Windsor. The applicant agreed he won't process topsoil or loam on the premises without further approval, but he was able to continue to sell that product, have it delivered and ready for sale as part of its landscaping business. And so, there have been piles of topsoil on the site right along that were used to service the customers who come in for that product. Soil entrance has been maintained, and the applicant had permission to come in to this commission to apply for the right to process material on the site, and that the promise between the parties was it would be considered on its merits. In all other respects, the approval of the commission that was granted followed the stipulation for judgment that stated December 11th, 2015, which I have also provided a copy of as part of the record. I took the time to go through that because I'm trying to demonstrate to the commission and to offer you some, some reassurance that Mr. Silvestri has done everything that he can to continue his business, to continue it successfully as for his family, but also to be a good citizen in the town of South Windsor and to comply with those aspects of the, of the stipulation and the, and the operation that were agreed to back in, as evidenced by the documents that I've provided to you. What I'm gonna do now is ask Glenn Miller to come up, walk you through the enhanced landscape plan, as well as the cross-sections that Michelle requested to demonstrate that there is no public view available from roadways that would implicate being able to see stockpiles as is required by your regulation.
For the record, Glenn Martin, landscape architect with Design Professionals, and I'll talk about the landscaping. The proposed topsoil screener will be screened by a combination of existing buildings, fencing, vegetation, and new proposed evergreen screening. There are existing 13-foot-tall evergreen arborvitae's on the eastern edge of the existing storage yard, and nine-to-eleven tall existing evergreen arborvitae's along the northeastern edge of the existing storage yard, which screen the existing yard and proposed topsoil screener from Strong Road. As you can see on the map, these are the 13-foot-tall arborvitae's, and these are the nine-to-eleven tall existing arborvitae's. For the record, Glenn Martin, landscape architect with Design Professionals, and I'll talk about the landscaping. The proposed topsoil screener will be screened by a combination of existing buildings, fencing, vegetation, and new proposed evergreen screening. There are existing 13-foot-tall evergreen arborettes on the eastern edge of the existing storage yard and nine-to-eleven tall existing evergreen arborettes along the northeastern edge of the existing storage yard, which screen the existing yard and proposed topsoil screener from Strong Road. As you can see on the map, these are the 13-foot-tall arborettes and these are the nine-to-eleven tall existing arborettes which are there today. And I can show you on the section. This is the view from Strong Road at three-and-a-half feet tall. The existing arborettes do block the view to the rear of the property where the screener The existing house, garage, and main building along with the existing six-foot-high white solid vinyl fencing also provide screening of the existing yard and proposed topsoil screener location. And this is the existing residence, the main building, and there's some existing six-foot-high solid white vinyl fencing in this area already, so that does provide quite a bit of screening already. There's also existing landscaping between the residential house and main building which provides screening in the existing yard and proposed topsoil screener location from Strong Road. The vegetation includes two mature shade trees on the western edge of the yard and two shade trees adjacent to the parking area. So, in this area here, you have some existing landscaping. There's some evergreen shrubs in that area which help screen the rear of the property. There's a shade tree here and a very large shade tree here as well on the west. And then, the parking lot has two shade trees as well to help block the view to the rear. Our proposed eight-foot-tall evergreen arborettes are being provided to supplement the existing screening. The proposed arborettes are proposed along the western edge of the yard and between the existing residential garage and main building. So, we're proposing the eight-foot-tall arborettes in this area to help screen the yard and also along here, along the white fencing and here as well, that will help screen the rear of the property. Additional arborettes are provided along the northern side of the existing hoop house and storage bin with two more arborettes along the bin close to the proposed topsoil screener location. So, additional arborettes will be provided here along the existing hoop house and bin and a few more down here closer to the screener operation to help further screen the rear of the yard. Additional arborettes are also proposed on the eastern edge of the yard to fill in a gap in the existing tall evergreen hedge. Those would be over here. There's a bit of a gap here that we're going to be filling in with more arborettes for additional screening. I can go back to the section. This is the view from Route 5 and so the existing, there's some existing vegetation here now outside the property line, which is about eight feet tall. Our proposed arborette hedge will just reinforce that screening and this also shows the eventual size of the arborettes, which can grow at least to be 15 feet tall or more to help screen the rear of the property and the screener operation. So, in conclusion, the proposed topsoil screener location will be effectively screened and not visible from Strong Road or Route 5. Thank you.
I want to apologize to Glenn, showing my age referring to Glenn Miller, and I apologize to Mr. Martin. We had the opportunity of comments from both your town planner and your town engineer. We responded to Mr. Doolittle's comments earlier indicating that all of his comments were acceptable and would be, the plans would be modified to address each of those. We received some comments from Michelle, which we think we have responded to. She felt strongly and we, and our client agreed that the property should be merged rather than continued to be treated as two separate properties. So, we have addressed that. We have reflected both current and proposed conditions for the merged property on the plans that have been most recently submitted. We've provided a truck turning pattern within the site to show that the triaxle trucks that would bring material to the site and remove it from the site can make all of the turning movements that are required to allow that activity to be conducted safely. There was a question as to whether or not some of the other activities that go on at the Brick property would be brought to this site and the answer is they would not. We are asking only for approval of a trommel screener. We indicate in our application that we are willing to agree to a condition that it would only operate between 10:00 a.m. and 2:00 p.m. and that other activities that Mr. Silvestri has, that he conducts at the Red Brick property, would simply not be conducted at this site and if no other site could be located, he would have to ultimately abandon those activities as part of his business plan. We have provided the cross-sections that Glenn just showed to you and we have submitted a sound study that was updated. We had a sound study in the prior application and Michelle suggested that it should be redone. It has been redone. It's been submitted to you and the conclusion of that sound study is that there is no exceedance of any of the noise regulations for the town by the operation of the trommel. It is relatively small, relatively quiet piece of machinery that would operate, as I indicated, only from 10:00 in the morning until 2:00 in the afternoon to manufacture topsoil for that aspect of the business that the Silvestries have at the site. The proposal that you have before you meets or satisfies all of the standards of a special exception and site plan approval. All of the physical standards and requirements of the I-zone are met by the plan that has been prepared by Design Professionals. Section 2.11, which is that no storage of any material outside a building is allowed if such storage is visible from a public way, is satisfied by the extensive landscaping and screening that has been provided and described by Glenn in his presentation and is shown on the plans. Height limitation on the topsoil pile is stipulated to be 12 feet and that is as high as it needs to be and we would agree to that height limitation as, again, part of this approval. The view from John Fitch Boulevard is obviously obscured not only by existing, by the railroad line, the existing vegetation, and the additional screening that Glenn has proposed, but also by virtue of the fact that the trommel would be some, and the storage piles would be some substantial distance from the westerly boundary and also a substantial distance from Strong Road, as is clear from the cross-sections that have been provided. It simply will not be possible to see these storage piles from either public way. As all properties surrounding this property or I-zone, no buffer is required. And as I indicated, we did comply with Michelle's request to provide an additional sound study which indicated there should be no sound that would violate any town ordinance at The entire wholesale retail operation, including the sale of topsoil from the site, is already approved and what we seek tonight is a resolution to the problem that confronts the Silvestries, which is the loss of the area that now provides them with the opportunity to manufacture topsoil. They simply are not going to be able to continue that at the present location. And the manufacture of topsoil is a very important aspect of their business and has helped them survive through some pretty difficult times. I would also state for the record that this proposal is consistent with your Plan of Conservation and Development. Your Plan of Conservation and Development speaks to business development, to encourage business development in existing business zones. The current operation is well-suited to its location as it is in the midst of an industrial zone that has some of the heavier industrial uses in South Windsor. As some of you may remember, this was a greenhouse operation before it was acquired by the Silvestries. So, it has continued to provide landscape supplies and services as a continuation of an appropriate use of this property. Finally, the, all of the items listed as special exception requirements in your regulation are satisfied. The site is flat. It's screened already with mature plantings and will be reinforced by the additional plant, things that we described, as it is completely surrounded by I-zone properties. There are no environmental impacts from the sale of landscape material or from the manufacture of topsoil. Strong Road is a road in an industrial zone. Excellent sightlines exist at the driveway for entering and exiting traffic. We're not aware of any traffic issues that exist for the site. There are no impacts to the utilities or stormwater drainage system that is well-stabilized already on the site. The non-conforming residential uses that are nearby are in the midst of an industrial zone and is it expected that industrial type uses such as the one we propose would occur on this property? I've provided you with some information on the value that's been maintained on the residential properties in the midst of this rather large industrial zone and we see no impact on property values by the approval of the opportunity to manufacture topsoil on the site whatsoever. For all of those reasons, we think that we meet all of the standards of special exception and site plan approval. We think that it's appropriate for you to recognize that this manufacturing use is permitted by site plan approval in an industrial zone and we think that the Silvestries have addressed all of the concerns that this commission had some seven or eight years ago in a very positive way and provided you with a much-improved, a much-reinforced plan that hopefully will allow you to find that all of the requirements of the zone are met and that this approval can be granted. We're happy to answer any questions that the commission may have or that may be raised by comments from the public.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll turn to our town staff, our director of planning, Michelle Light.
Thank you. This is a request for a modification to this special exception and site plan approval for the existing landscaping supply center at 287 Strong Road to include 275 Strong Road and to add a topsoil screening operation in our industrial zones. The two properties in total are about 2.3 acres. This original approval was granted back in 2009 for a special exception for the landscape material sales and storage for this business. Included a showroom, office area, as well as storage units. It was approved by special exception, subject to your criteria. With this application, the applicant's proposing to add to the special exception the topsoil screening operations. In 2013, the applicant had been cited by the zoning office, came in with an application. I think Attorney Alter kind of walked through what happened then, the denial by this commission, the stipulated agreement. I also provided you the copy of the stipulated agreement in your packet, so you should have received that as well. That agreement, you know, spelled out hours of operation. It brought the site into compliance and it did put a caveat in there that the applicant could come back to this commission at a future date to request processing of material on site and would be considered on its merits at that time. So, as indicated by Attorney Alter, the applicant is proposing to combine the two sites and for a new combined lot and it does meet all of our zoning requirements. The impervious coverage for the combined lot would be 53%. We allow up to 65%. The parking stays intact with 10 spaces. There's no additional requirements with this application. However, they have located on the site where the equipment would be stored and they have provided a list of equipment to be stored on site and that's in the existing fenced area at 275 Strong Road. The applicant indicated in their narrative that they'd like to do topsoil screening 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Monday through Friday with no screening activities on the weekends. I guess the one question I did have related to those hours, would there be trucking onto the site of dirt beyond those hours? And secondly, will there be other companies besides East Hartford Sand and Gravel or Stone Landscaping trucking onto the site? I know other trucks go to the other site on the KF Brick property, so I just, I guess, trying to get a handle on the scope of the trucking activity outside of the 10 to 2 hours. So, maybe the applicant could just address that. I did hear tonight that they don't intend on moving other operations from the KF Brick site over, which I know was a concern of some of the folks in the neighborhood. So, my understanding is this is for topsoil screening solely. As far as site plan improvements shown, they do show the back area, the southern area where the southwestern area, I should say, where the topsoil stockpiles would be and the screening activities would take place. They're showing maximum 12-foot-high piles. They have provided additional landscape screening of arborettes to meet our requirements of no visibility from public ways. Other site changes include removal of some of the bins, I think six or so bins, to make the circulation pattern work. As indicated, have provided cross-sections. Based on the traffic information supplied by the applicant, and I guess this is based on their experience, is the busiest time of year is from April 1st until October 1st with April, May being the busiest months. Over the past two years, with the average number of trucks, 10 to 15 trucks a day. So, I was just kind of curious with these new operations, what that number might change to on a daily basis? Again, indicating 10 to 15 trucks is what the average, what could we expect for an average truck traffic during that time? The sound study that had been submitted with the application went back to 2013, so I did request the applicant update that. They did provide, and I think it's in front of you tonight, a supplement to that study. They went down and took some measurements down at the current operations and did provide that documentation demonstrating compliance with the town's current noise ordinance. If the application is approved, the planning department has two modifications that would request. The properties for 287 and 275 Strong Road must be combined by deed in the land records and also measures should be taken to ensure the piles are left uncovered for any period of time. Dust is a concern as well as mud on site, so those would be items we'd be looking to make sure are addressed on a daily basis. Thank you.
Thank you very much. At this time, we'll turn to our town engineer, Jeff Doolittle.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As was indicated by Attorney Alter, my comments have been addressed and I have no additional comments on this application.
Okay, thank you very much. At this time, I'll turn to the public. Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of this application? Please step forward. Hearing and seeing none. Is there anyone who would like to speak against this application or have questions or concerns? Please step forward and I'll just remind you, we should have a sign-in sheet up there if you could.
My name is Nicole Bamber and I reside at 315 Strong Road. As I look at these site plans, I often find myself wondering why anyone would allow a business to operate under such tight and unsafe circumstances. I watch several triaxle trucks fly in and out daily, often making risky maneuvers due to the limited space and one-way skinny driveway, only a few feet from a major intersection of John Fitch Boulevard, plus an active set of train tracks. I also see a brick-and-mortar business that remains open to the public. Public customers could include children, families, and elderly, and even handicap. I read in the site plans that Mr. Silvestri has a handicap parking space. This tells me that he anticipates accommodating customers who might have disabilities. If you observe the one, the way he conducts business, it is evident- If you observe the way he conducts business, it is evident that this is an active construction site. Trucks coming and going, dumping debris on the street, often driving excessively fast, plus the piles of dirt so high that you cannot even see the other side. You can't enter a construction zone without a hard hat. So I ask, why is he exposing his very own customers to potential hazards that could harm them? How is this a safe plan? Where is the buffer zone? While we immensely appreciate the town's attempts to hold this business accountable to safety guidelines and specific criteria under this special exception, the truth sadly is that Mr. Silvestri has proven himself that he is unable to adhere to the zoning regulation, full zoning regulations set forth. Beyond this safety concern and his breach of select conduct, I've witnessed countless middle fingers targeted towards myself or my family. Aggressive and reckless driving, a public-facing slander effort targeted towards my family. To clarify for the public in the room here, Mr. Silvestri changed the language on his forward-facing company sign in 2013 to read "Bimbo Bambers." Beyond this atrocious stunt, we've witnessed years of him and his friends throwing trash out of their truck window onto our property. The trash is often empty alcohol bottles, to clarify. Imagine someone doing this for eight years now? Countless times, Mr. Silvestri has proven he lacks some moral integrity, and quite honestly, I am shocked to see that the town of South Windsor is supporting business owners who conduct their dealings in such a poor manner. Mr. Silvestri's actions are clearly not aligned with the town's mission statement nor core values. I'm disappointed to be here, back eight years later debating the same topic. I'm sickened by the way he's treated my elderly parents, and more importantly, exhausted to be put through their harassment, deceit, and manipulation from a fellow good neighbor. In good faith, we trusted the town that you would protect your residents from anything that negatively impacted their quality of life like this. But also in good faith, we truly did indeed trust Mr. Silvestri to be the respectful business professional that he told us he would be. But he himself has not only proven that the town of South Windsor and their residents cannot trust him, but he took it even further to proactively make his neighbors' lives miserable for years now. So I ask the Planning and Zoning Commission to take back control and to put an end to this chaos. What is different this time around? All during a global pandemic, while we are focusing on the health and safety of our loved ones, Mr. Silvestri goes for it again, trying to manipulate the narrative and distract you to approve this, only for him to inevitably neglect the stipulations, ignore your wishes, break his own promises, and most importantly, willfully disrespect several of his neighbors. We need to address also that Mr. Silvestri has been falsifying by omission. Please, for the room and for the public, clarify what was discussed in the town council meeting on July 6, 2021, in response to Mr. Silvestri's RFP to lease municipally-owned land at Burgess Road. I often wonder why his screening operation could not shift there, because why does he need two extra acres of land that he has omitted to tell the room here? So I continue to ask myself, why are we here again? In doing my due diligence to understand why, I came across his plea for you to approve this special exception authorization of his new asks because, quote, "An off-site location at the Redland Brick property, which he has been utilizing for screening operations, is set to close and will no longer be available for the applicant's use." Being the professional that I am, I did my research before speaking tonight and called Redland Brick, who directed me to the Belden Brick Company. Robert F. Belden, chairman and CEO of the Belden Brick Company, was caught off guard and confused. When I asked if the lease was terminated, Mr. Belden exclaimed, "We haven't terminated it." I don't know why he would say, "It's terminated," and, gosh, I better call him and find out what he is talking about, because I was expecting him to do a few things for me. Fool me once, shame on you. Fool me twice, shame on me. Fool us for eight years, shame on everyone. Given his new two acres leased now from the town, plus the fact that he misled you to believe the brick quarry was no longer available to him, respectfully, I now see this as a mute point." That completes my comments. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else from the public who would like to speak against or have questions or concerns they'd like to voice? Please step forward. I just want to remind about the sign-in sheet on the podium.
I don't know if you can hear me, can you?
Yes.
My name's Virginia Bamber. I live at 315 Strong Road. We've lived there since 1985, and 285 Strong Road was an empty lot, and 275 was an empty house because the Tyrone and Mr. Patria had passed away, and they were trying to sell it. And of course, as they...
Excuse me for a minute. If you could speak into the microphone, because I'm having trouble under hearing you.
I know, I need a platform.
It doesn't...
How about that? Can you hear me now?
Wow.
Thank you. Oh, thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, so before, I'd like to just, I'd like to clarify some of the statements that were made by the attorney. First of all, we are industrial, special exception, but the businesses that have been on Strong Road between Route 5 and North Nutmeg have been, the gentleman at 280 Strong Road, he had ice skating, sharpening little business in the back, and the greenhouse that they're talking about was there when we moved in, and it wasn't big. It was, you know, but I think because they were businesses, the zoning was changed. Okay, so that's one thing. And 90% of the traffic that he's indicating that comes off of North Nutmeg, yes, there's a bus company, there's, you know, there's a steel company, all those businesses, we have a good rapport with them. They don't come down our road, except a couple of the buses. But almost all the companies, my daughter went to school with a lot of the parents who own them, they all go out Governor's Highway to respect, whoops, to respect us as residents on Strong Road. So when he says that, he doesn't live on our road to know what the traffic is every day. We do, and we sit on our front porch, and it's fine. We've had no issue with the trucks and with the current situation that Mr. Silvestri has, the business that's already been allowed in 2009, there was never an issue. Okay? So that, I just wanted to, you know, explain that to you before I got started. So in the information you have there is, in the spring of 2013, Mr. Silvestri moved the screener in question onto 287 Strong Road without permission from your committee. So for approximately seven months, my neighbors, my husband, I, all of us, we lived through the banging of trucks and topsoil being dropped, and as you could see the pictures in there that are in the booklet, it was a disaster. Okay? And so for seven months, he violated zoning rules or zoning approval. He also put up a hoop house. He put up Jersey barriers. It's ugly. There's Jersey barriers on top of all of his nice bins he added to make the, so all of his materials are all way higher now. And when we tried to ask about that, we were told that we're not going to make them take the Jersey barriers down. We'll make them apply for approval for the hoop house, and they wouldn't address the piles of sand that were never in bins. For years, they were never in bins. We were just told that it's not, that we're not going to pursue it. But, so he was issued in 2013 a notice of violation, and he was told to apply for a permit and move the screener. He left that screener out for seven months, and when he was asked by your committee, why, to Michelle, why is he still allowed? One of the members said, "Why was he allowed all these months to screen over there and the truck traffic?" She said, "We told his attorneys, and we told him several times. He refused to move it." So he utilized his seven months that he tells you in his letter by making our life miserable with the mess and the trucks, and I even gave the committee at that time logs. I worked at home a lot, so I kept logs, 38, 40, 50 trucks a day, bringing in all companies picking up topsoil, triaxle dump trucks and dumping. So that's just to tell you what he did in 2013. Let's see. Oh, and he also, he also, what he did was, he was using CLMP's driveway without permission, which is, they sold, it's now Eversource, it's not CLMP, because Eversource bought CLMP.
If I may, that is something that has already been corrected.
Yes, it was resolved, yes, yes.
I don't see it being helpful to this.
What I'm trying to show you is that, and he also dug, he dug a driveway on the property that his daughter and a child live at to go out to Strong Road. He did that without approval. And yes, he resolves his violations, but after he's issued a notice of violation. So I'm just trying to explain to you what steps he would go beyond to get his business to what he wants it. And I've also, and I apologize if I've, I included the planning and zoning meetings of 2013 where you can see that my neighbors and I, all of us spoke. We've all spoke on what we went through. The meeting, when he had, the first application, he withdrew. Then he filed another one, January 2014, and those also, and then the denial letter, which I also included, because a couple of my neighbors, the one directly next door to him, she's got heart, she's got health issues, she couldn't come tonight, but you'll see, she's fae derpy, she's in there. And Lionel Harris is a volunteer fireman, and he said, he apologized, he couldn't come. But they all are saying they believe the same thing they wrote in there in 2013. Okay? And then I just like, I would like to point out, if it's okay, I'd like to point out a few things in his narrative statement. He talks in here, "A subsequent settlement with the Planning and Zoning Commission in South Windsor Stone Landscape dated December 15th, approved by the commission in January." That settlement was because he got denied, and he sued the town. And after his, I monitored his docket case, and when it was in the courts for a year and a half, he must have decided he didn't, he didn't want to pursue it anymore. So he withdrew. And they, so these stipulations in here were made because he, they gave in a few things to him, that's what I believe, I apologize, but it looks like that, but that's the only reason they gave him. And that settlement agreement was because he fixed the notice of violations. He fixed the hoop house by applying for a permit. You know what I mean? He fixed, that's why, it looks like he's in compliance, but he still had the Jersey barriers on top. He still had, you know, all the sand piles. And let me tell you, when they talk about the side, they show you this side, okay? The side on, we're CLMP, on your, I'm sorry, on the side where he's talking about putting Arby reviters and all, you should see what that looks like. He put trees in, and he took them out. He promised the, he promised the planning and zoning he would put a nice white fence up for my neighbor and us. He took it down a week later and used it on his property. It's a disaster on that side of the road, dead trees, weeds. He refuses to maintain the property on that side. It's a disaster. So when he tells you he's going to fix it, I'm just telling you that he has not done any of that since the day. If you drive down that road, it's a disaster. My poor neighbor has to look at weeds and dead trees. And you know what he also did? He, the wall of the, the wall along there of that driveway, the wall for the bins, he took, there's holes in it. He took some of them down and tried to cover it, the opening, with a tree. So when you, if you look through the dead tree, you could see right in, right over to his building where his store is, because he took down some of the, so it's uneven, the walls. So that's just a few of the things. He still has topsoil piles, they're not in bins. He, let's see, what else he, and for, like I said, that seven months, you know, he has a history of non-complying, and like my daughter said, he just will, if you, if you call, I have several police reports from the time, and I understand that's all past, but it doesn't mean that he's going to be any more compliant now with treating us as neighbors. He's very disrespectful to us, and I normally wouldn't give you a picture of his, he used his sign for non-conforming. Instead of advertising, he called us bimbos on it, and he told the police that it was, he put two A's in our last name because it's a kind of plant. It's a plant he's growing, Bamber Plant, he said. So that's, you know, I'll tell you, so, you know, just to be surprised. And when he talks about his hours at 10 to 2, I asked Michelle, he's screening between 10 and 2, but he's got to bring materials in to screen. Is that going to be all day? Are we going to have all these dump trucks coming in and dropping the materials, and then he's going to wait till 10 o'clock? And I just can't believe, I have to tell you, from, I filed violations of hours of operation, he's not supposed to dump now on Saturday before 10. You should see how many Saturdays we've had. I've sent Michelle emails. He brings his trucks in at 7:00 on Saturday morning, when he's not supposed to bring loads in until 10. Anything to start his day so that he can do, run his business, he runs it the way he wants, not the way the town expects him to run it. The other issue, so like I said, we're concerned about the amount of trucks. And he talks about, I just have an issue with the land. He puts in his cover letter here that the total land is 2.29. Well, 1.60 is South Windsor Stone Landscaping property, and it's mostly full. If you go there, you're going to see that it's mostly already occupied with a lot of items. So I'm just basically saying, we just feel it looks like a safety hazard, but that's not my decision, so. And I'd like to next talk about the sound. Okay? Mr. Silvestri tends to think that he's going to do these sound testings. He brings officials from the town who, you know, don't know about truck business and dump trucks. If you notice in his sound test, he tests the screener running, he tests the loading the screener with the payloader, he tests the payloader loading a truck. He says he tested an occasional dump truck. His dump trucks are enough to make you jump out of your skin when he unloads the materials. The dump truck can be unloaded at different speeds. He is not going to run a business and ask his drivers to slowly, the gate on the back of that dump truck bangs three or four times, and it's enough to jump you out of your skin. And I do remember in 2013, Mr. Bazani was so nice because he stated he owned a construction company. He knew for a fact that the back of the dump trucks don't just bang at a very slow speed that, and at that time, he had 30 or 40 a day. We were sitting with earplugs on all day. We do not feel that he can avoid running that same kind of business. He's bringing the same screener in, he's going to do, it's got to be, he's going to conduct the same activities. And so we're just saying that we don't believe he fully showed you the sounds of every, every item that he, or every, you know, piece of material that he's going to, he's going to need to run this. The trucks, he avoided testing any trucks at full speed, because he knows it's not going to meet the sound decimal. There's no way. So, I mean, he's obviously avoided doing that because he didn't want you to, or anybody to know. And in 2014, they asked him why there were so many trucks, and he never answered. It's in the minutes, he just never, he never bothered to, you know, to tell people. So we, we just, like I said, we basically believe that he does not meet the criteria of 8.4 special exceptions, because our life is going to be miserable again. And if you could see from the pictures, there was mud everywhere, and the last page, I gave you a picture of his current back property. Okay? And I want to point out that he shows you on here that there's 12 bins in the back along CLMP property. There's 12 bins, and he's going to remove five. He already has seven only. I counted them. There's seven bins in the back. So he's, he's not removing five, he already removed five a long time ago. So there's seven bins in the back. He made them bigger so that he could put stones, because he sells stones. One of them looks like it has gravel in it. So I'm just not sure where he's going to put the stockpile of the on-screened. Now, he has to bring on-screen material first to screen, and I don't know where he's going to put that. I mean, I'm just questioning why he's telling you he's removing five bins when he already removed them in the back. And the other thing I wanted to let you know, way back in 2014, his, in the minutes of the meeting, his wife, he was asked... of the meeting, his wife, he was asked, let's see, it's in the revised application, I believe, the last two lines. Yes. It's the minutes from 21114. Two chairman asked him, his wife, what the majority of the on-screen materials come from, and Mr. Silvestri stated, he buys the material from job sites and processes the material and sells it. Well, we know that he went to Distinctive Tree when they just, they were clearing their lot, he went there and took loads, we saw him come by. And guess what, they all went to the quarry, so we were okay with that. He also bought from the town compost. And I was told by the superintendent of Public Works that he mixes the compo, the, the compost with the sand to make, and then his wife told them here that we have, we pre-mix the material at Redland Brick Company, which is brought in and placed in the screener in the payloader, and then is placed in trucks to sell or in bins. But they pre-screen it. So, she's saying that the materials they use to make it, the last step is done, so. So, if he's gonna do this now on Burgess Road, because on July 6th, the town manager approved him, sat here and told the, the town council that he knew everything about Mr. Silvestri, and all the questions they asked, there were wrong answers. They, the, the town manager said, "I'm approving," and now he's leasing from this town at Burgess Road, an acre of land for two years, they gave him a permit. It was supposed to go through your committee, but the town manager decided, "No, I'm approving it." If you listen to the minutes, I mean, it's all on the recorded. So, when they asked him, they asked the town manager, "Well, what will his truck traffic be?" You know, "Oh, well, he's only going an eighth of a mile down the road, it's not affecting any of the neighbors." Well, he was wrong. Because now he comes from the quarry, when he brings his topsoil and he drops it at 287 Strong Road, now he's gonna be coming from Burgess with all these trucks of materially picks up from anybody who's clearing land, and it's all gonna come by all those residential houses and all the way down to, to 287. So, he doesn't even live on our road to know all the questions that the council asked him, he just kept saying, "It's not gonna affect the neighbors, it's not gonna affect the neighbors." And I, I just find this horrendous that our town will lease land to a corporation when it's not farming. I mean, it, I just, I'm just frustrated with that part. So, basically, I just wanna let you know, these were the things, and I, you know, and you could see for yourself from the minutes and the stuff of what we went through. All right. Thank you so much for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Okay, is there anyone else who would like to speak against or have questions or concerns? Please step forward.
Good evening, can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm kinda short. My name is Nancy Jackson, and I live at 306 Strong Road. I'm also speaking for Don Roy, who lives right next door to me. For the past 30 years, as well as several other residents in the 10 houses located between Route 5 and Nutmeg Road, we have been there. I am opposed to South Windsor Stone Landscaping expanding its operation to include the topsoil screening for the following reasons, which I feel are related to our quality of life. Number one, increased noise with operating the screener equipment. Currently, the day-to-day operation of the payloader and the heavy-duty dump trucks, the constant backing up and the banging of the dump trucks were not demonstrated on the recent sound study. Number two, the increased piles of topsoil to the existing site. I question if there is really enough room to expand this operation, and am also concerned about the amount of dust it will create for our properties. Number three, the noise with the increased truck traffic and entering and exiting through one driveway. Strong Road already has non-stop traffic with cars, trucks, and even school buses. The new plans, the new plan shows screening operation Monday through Friday, 10 to 2. In the past, there have been many occasions that South Windsor Stone and landscaping business has exceeded their hours of operation. One example of this is during the winter months, trucks are entering all hours of the night loading sand and salt. I asked that the Planning and Zoning Commission and the department to do their due diligence in reviewing before accepting these plans, and take into consideration the balance between the residents living on Strong Road and the business. Thank you for your time and consideration on this matter. Nancy Jackson and Don Roy. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to speak against? Please step forward.
Good evening. My name is Rick Bamber. I live at 315 Strong Road. And I just wanna say, you know, make it short and sweet, that, you know, we know that we live in an industrial zone area, we know this. And when he first put up his stand, stone and landscaping operation, we had no objections to that. You know, I mean, it's a business, it's going in, fine. What I object to so much, and I think I speak for all the neighbors, is, is the screening operation that he wants to put in. It was there once before, some years ago, and he did not get approval for that then. And the noise, the dust was just incredible. The town told him to cease operation, and he didn't. He just kept going. And I gotta tell you, the, the site itself at 287 Strong Road is just too small to, to handle this. We know this because we, we went through it some years ago, and I gotta tell you, you know, it ruined our quality of life. Because he kept going the whole summer and didn't stop, even though he got letters from the town telling him to stop. So, therefore, that's why, you know, I'm here tonight, because I, I don't wanna see that happen again, I just don't. And like I said before, I think the site is just too small to handle that operation. So, I, I hope that he does not get approval for this, because we just, as neighbors, we just don't wanna go through that again. It, it was terrible, and I think it would affect the, our value also of our property. You know, because maybe someday, we would like to move and, you know, try to get a fair price for our property and homes, so. Well, listen, thank you very much for listening.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the public who would like to speak or have questions or concerns? Please step forward. Hearing and seeing none, we'll turn to Commissioners, Commissioner Dexter.
I'm, I'm gonna pass for right now, Bart.
Okay. Commissioner Bonzani.
Just a couple comments.
Down, 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 not up, down.
I'll take it. The hours of screening he has here is between 10 and 2, which to me is, would be more than fair. I don't think he had hours last time, it was just a screening, going through all my records. You know, that, that's, and it is an industrial zone. And I think he said he put irrigation system since the last time he was here, is that true?
That's correct.
And irrigation system throughout the property definitely helps as far as dust control. I mean, there's, there's no doubt about that. And as far as the banging tailgates, when you load trucks that have already been screened, you don't, obviously, you don't dump the load, you load the trucks, there would be no more banging tailgates, and they are allowed. And then the only question I have is, a couple of the neighbors, and actually, Michelle asked, he said he has between 10 and 15 trucks coming in now, if he does the screening operation, how many more trucks does he expect to come to dump the, the stuff that needs to be screened? Do you have an answer on that?
So, right now, under the current approval, he has approval to stockpile topsoil that has been processed at the brick facility on this site to sell it. So that, at this moment, he has stockpiles that he's loading and delivering to customers from this site. Right now, what happens is, the trucks come from the brickyard full of topsoil that's already been processed, and they deposit it at the site, and then it's picked up, picked up by a payloader and loaded to customers. If the operation at the brickyard stops, the trucks that we're bringing finished topsoil will now bring the components that will be for manufacturing. So, what I'm told, because we asked Mr. Silvestri this, he said, "It's the same trucks." What we had before was a truck full of topsoil coming in and leaving empty. Now, we'll have a truck full of components to be manufactured coming in and leaving empty, and the same number of customers hopefully will come in to take finished material, the manufactured topsoil, away as they have been. So, according to our client, he doesn't see that this generates more truck traffic than he currently has. That's his, the equation just changes when he needs to bring the components to this site rather than finished topsoil to the site. But the, the departure from the site doesn't change, the customers come to the site to be loaded and leave. And we also know that the business has changed. There are fewer customers buying topsoil, it's more, he does more business now with landscapers with smaller trucks that come in to be loaded for topsoil. The large customers that he had before have gone into their own topsoil manufacturing operation, for example, Cedar Mountain, if you're familiar with that operation on the Berlin Turnpike, used to buy all of its topsoil from Mr. Silvestri. They now manufacture their own instead of buying it from him. So, those large wholesale customers are not the ones that he's currently servicing. So, he has less activity with large trucks than he had before, which may explain the difference between 2014 and 2021.
Commissioner Foley.
On the industrial zone, Michelle, what are, what are the allowed hours of operation?
You don't have any specific hours of operation. I think what you can't lose sight of, and I think we had this discussion back in 2013, is first and foremost, a special exception was granted for this use. And although topsoil screening is a permitted use in the industrial zone, I think our attorney at the time said that he has a special exception use that he's expanding to include that. So, your special exception use allows you to put conditions on it, and you conditioned it with hours of operations.
Okay, so like Connecticut soils down there, there's, there's no limitation on...
That's correct, there's no hours of operations associated, no. No, you have a noise ordinance, you have to meet the noise ordinance, which does change in the evening hours.
Okay, but in same industrial zone, and he's willing to go from 10 to 2, Monday through Friday, and no, no Saturdays, correct?
It's correct.
Okay. Yeah, and then the, the 30, I think it was, Mrs. Bamber had said that there was 40 to 50, or 30 to 40 triaxles a day, I mean, I don't know where you'd put...
It's not my role to question what...
No, no, I understand, I'm just, I'm trying to comprehend where you would put 50 triaxle loads of material on that site.
Not only that, I don't know where you would store that much topsoil...
Correct.
...to load from this site. That's, that's a lot of topsoil. 30 or 40 triaxles, they carry 15 to 20 yards, a triaxle, that's...
So, is there a number, and I, I don't know if, because Michelle, I think you said you requested, is, if there's a maximum number?
I, I was just trying to get a handle on the scope. They are telling us the busiest time of year, they have 11 to 15 trucks coming, and I was just trying to get an understanding with this new operation for increasing the number of trucks. I understand that he has the ability to sell topsoil currently with his original approval, those should have been out of bins, not necessarily piles out there. So, again, my question was really trying to get at the scope.
And I, I went through, down Route 5 today, down Strong, I checked out, I mean, Distinctive Tree's got a heck of an operation going on down the road, there's a lot of truck traffic now, it's not just belonging to one location, but the CLMP facility, as you come down Route 5, we talk about this unsightliness, or what, there's spools, there's, I mean, when I came down Route 5, you really can't see any operation. When you go down Strong Road, it kinda looks like a garden center with bins, but I don't know what it's gonna look like in the future. Hopefully, he would comply with Arbor Vitae buffers, the, he's done irrigation, he's limiting the hours of operation. And I think if we just give the town inspects and, I mean, that's just my opinion, thank you.
Commissioner Wagner.
Thank you. First of all, there's a bit of jargon that's being kicked around, "nonconforming." I have a good understanding what that is, I'm not sure everyone who's listening to this understands what it means, so perhaps Mrs. Light could explain what that is and what the rights are of someone who owns a nonconforming property in a zone that has now become industrial.
Okay, so, so my understanding, and I, and I may be wrong, but my understanding is, it was in zoned industrial for a very long time, and those houses were built to support the brick company, the brick homes along that area there. So, I don't exactly know what the zoning was at the time, but that area has been zoned industrial from the earliest land use maps that I have seen. So, I have to assume residential houses must have been permitted in industrial zones at some point. Today, we do not allow single-family houses in our industrial zone as permitted uses, so any house that exists currently in the industrial zone is now a nonconforming use based on our use table. People can enjoy the use of their home, they can sell it as a home, it can continue to be used as a home, you know, for 100 years, they don't lose that right. However, if it does sell and someone wanted to come and use it as a business, that would be a conforming use in that zone, and it could be converted from a residential use to a business use at that point.
So, what are their rights with regard to impact from a neighboring business compared to, say, someone who's in an actual residential zone?
I think each business has to be looked at as to how it meets the zoning requirements as it being permitted uses, and, and I think we learned with the special exception use, those uses are allowed. However, conditions can be placed to make those uses more palatable based on the environment that they're in. I think you're in a situation here where the special exception application back in 2009, which was a use added at the time, if I'm not mistaken, you know, the commission tried to put precautions and conditions in place to make it as compatible with the existing situation out there. As to what rights do residents have, I mean, residents have any kind of right from a nuisance, any of those kinds of things. I mean, but, but again, industrial users have rights... any of those kinds of things, I mean, but again, industrial users have rights too, and to be able to use their property under the regulations.
So these, at least the homes, the 306, 310, 318, they have bought Redland Brick, right?
Correct, Redland Brick would be on the north...
So they've actually been impacted in both directions by these kinds of businesses.
I think everything from about Nutmeg, a little bit further east, all the way over is industrial, so you do have a fair number of homes there.
So I was an alternate when the 2013 hearing took place, and I remember looking at the site back then, and in terms of appearance, I do think the site has gotten to be a much more attractive site, although they're still running a certain kind of business. I am concerned about the noise study, and I'm wondering if our engineer could explain what these mean. There's an L90 noise measurement and a 54.9, or an average measurement, and which is it that is covered by our zoning ordinance? And what are they?
Me, you? My application. I've been involved in a number of noise studies for quarries and excavation operations as well, so I do have some understanding.
I was actually asking Mr. Doolittle to explain that first.
I have not been involved in noise studies, and I am far from an expert on noise studies, so I would have to research it to give you a fair answer.
Because I noticed that the L90s have gone up by about 8 decibels between 2013 and 2021. So 1 decibel is 10 times the energy, the noise energy, that's what a decibel, the word desi means, 10, and 10 decibels gives you 10 times the energy, 20 decibels gives you 100 times the energy, so 8 decibels is actually a lot, although there's still apparently, at least these measurements are underneath the zoning ordinance, or the, I'm sorry, the town's ordinance, noise ordinance, which is consistent with the state noise ordinance.
Exactly the same as the state's.
But I guess it concerns me that you're also looking at 56, 54, 53, and I think the ordinance is at 60, right? So, you know, that's kind of borderline to me.
With all due respect, it's not a matter of borderline, it's, that's a fixed number, and if you're under it, you're in compliance, and if you're over it, you're not. It's not a matter of being concerned about that. The issue of noise, there are three different aspects of this, at least in my understanding. One is an ongoing operation, such as the screener running from 10 a.m. to 2 p.m., okay? That's a continuing noise, and that's the kind of noise that is subject to a noise ordinance. A sudden noise that occurs, like a tire blowing out, or an engine backfiring, is not a noise ordinance violation, because it's a sudden occurrence and then it stops. So that, and look, I'm not unsympathetic to the neighbors when they talk about the banging of the unloaded trucks, as the back of that swings back and then bangs into the truck, I understand that. And certainly, we can speak to our client about managing that in a better way, but that would not represent a violation of the noise ordinance as I understand it.
Well, I think the impulse has to do with whether it's repeated as well. It's not just, you know, a single impulse, a truck backfires and it doesn't happen until the next day versus however many times a day, the dump truck raises and lowers its bed, and the gate clangs there and makes an impulse noise, you know, I guess I...
That's a different issue than a violation of the noise ordinance, as I understand it.
And then I guess my other concern with this type of measurement, which is staged, and I mean, that's probably the only way you can do it, but, you know, it isn't necessarily the realistic operation, and that's why, you know, coming in at 56, 54, 53, kind of bothers me, because it doesn't mean that these are all conservative measurements. You know, I'm not convinced that necessarily they're conservative. Also, let's see, in a previous study, you had specific addresses, 290, 306, 307. Now we've just got Site 1, Site 2, Site 3, you know, it isn't even clear whether we're actually measuring the noise that impacts the people at 307 or 290.
We took, if you look, Mr. Wagner, as indicated, the screener is not at Strong Road, it's over at the brickyard. So the test was done where the screener is, we didn't...
Well, I know you made the noise, the noise was created where the screener is, which I think...
Correct, and it sits, right now, it's my understanding that it sits in this triangle up here.
Could you bring up the other picture that had the site?
Is it there now?
It's in the, it's in the brick, it's at the brick site.
You're correct, so it's not at...
No, we couldn't test it at the site, because it's not at the site.
Okay, so you tested the screener where it is now?
And the distances, the distances that were used are distances to residences. So we tried to duplicate how far away someone would be who would hear it. And then, and I take exception to the idea that you suggest it was staged, the screener was run, payloader was run, trucks were run, just the way the operation runs. The sound recording device was set at distances representative of distances from houses, because we couldn't otherwise duplicate it. And there was no staging of it, this was done by design professionals and professional engineers, and a professional engineer put a seal on it.
So, yeah, I'm sorry, if I use the word staged, that could have, you know, negative, unintended negative implication. I mean, you set up the test and you ran it, which, like I said, is probably the only way you could even do that, so, you know, I'm just saying that it was set up to do the test as best you could, but, you know, I'm not sure it guarantees it's conservative. I do have some other things I'd like to ask about. There was some mention of a number of things that I would take as having been zoning violations and police complaints, so I'd ask Mrs. Lipe, do we have a record of complaints to the zoning enforcement officer, or to the police, about how this operation is being run, and are those current, or reasonably recent, or are these going back to 2013?
There have been some recent complaints that came into our office, and by recent, I mean in the last six months or a year, related to not in accordance with the hours of operations. I'd really have to check, because complaints can go into a variety of locations. Noise complaints go to the health officer, for example. I could certainly investigate to see, I'm not aware of any noise complaints that have gone to the health officer, like I said, I'd have to check with Pam Oliver, just to see, I know we've had a couple complaints over the years, but nothing significant.
And noise complaints are very subjective, and you really, you know, the noise occurred yesterday, and today the noise isn't occurring, and you don't really know, it's a subjective judgment by the person making the complaint. But hours of operation is not subjective, they're either operating or they're not, and I guess I'd wonder if there are those kind of complaints.
I know we've had one in the last six months, I don't, I'd have to check the record to see how many, previously we would have them documented, it has not been a chronic problem, let's just put it that way. Mr. Silvestri would hear from us regularly if it was.
So we were handed a folder with a bunch of pictures in it. I'll just hold it up, and my concern about the pictures is they're not identified specifically as to the date they were taken, or, you know, the circumstances they were taken, so whoever it was that provided those pictures, I wonder if they could come back up and explain to me, when were these pictures taken, and, you know, where were they taken from?
Appreciate it. Those are actually the same pictures I gave the committee in 2013, I still had them. So those are from 2013, the seven months he had the screener. Now I understand you're saying he resolved the mud, but, and when I talked about the 38 trucks a day, or 40 trucks, we watched, at that time though, I have to say, at that time, he was using three driveways, okay? So he was using CLMP, which is now EverSource driveway. He had trucks...
Excuse me, excuse me, so all these pictures except the one labeled 91921 were taken back in 2013?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that was really all the question I had, thank you. Yeah, there was some mention of operations during snowstorms, where, you know, perhaps the town or somebody needs sand delivered in the middle of the night, has that been happening?
I know that there's sand that Mr. Silvestri makes available, and I also know that the town is one of his customers, but it may very well be that during a snowstorm, if plow truck needed sand, they would go to the nearest possible opportunity to secure it.
Do you know if that's still happening? I don't know if we're putting sand down, are we putting sand or not? We're just using chemicals, right?
Right, the town doesn't use sand right now.
Okay. And is that true of other towns in the area?
Most towns have gone to salt, I don't know about East Windsor, for example. Some may still use a mix.
Excuse me, excuse me. The public comment is done. If, excuse me, if a commissioner sees your hands up and they would like to call on you, then you would be addressed at that time, okay? Thanks.
So now, there was also mention of a fence between their property, and I guess it's between that and 307. Were we, did we require them to put up a fence, and did they take it down? What do you know about that, Mrs. Lipe?
I'm going to have to refer back to the 2009 plan, I'd have to...
I'm sorry?
I'll have to refer back to the 2009 plan, so I will get back to you on that.
All right, I think for now, that's all I have, however, the lady in back, and I didn't understand your name the first time, so I still don't know your name, the, let's do the lady in the corner first.
If you could please approach the podium?
Yeah, please be where you can use the microphone.
Thank you so much. My name's Nicole Bamber again. I just wanted to provide context and background from this past winter when you asked about the sanding.
Excuse me, which house do you live in?
315 Strong Road.
315, okay.
Yeah, so over the winter, I've been living there for quite some time, and he, it was very late at night, I was walking my dog, I want to say around 11:30 p.m., and a truck with a plow, a smaller truck, it wasn't a triaxle with a plow, came out of his driveway, put its high beams on, and I could tell that it was an unusual pattern of behavior at night, but I just, I didn't know it was going to become an issue and a risk. Gunned it towards me so quickly that I had to dive across the street into my other neighbor across the street's driveway, and that's when I realized he is operating, and it was after 11 o'clock at night, and I did file a police report, and the supervising officer did call me back and went over to his property to address.
Approximately, when was that?
Shoot, it was this past winter, I could get back to you with the exact date, and I can also get back to you with the police report details, if that's okay.
Sometime in the last year.
Oh yeah, this was this last winter, yes, it was when the snow piles were very high.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
And then the other lady. Excuse me, I've recognized her to speak, please.
Mr. Silvestri was, is running, I don't know about this winter, but last year he ran an operation, he allowed customers to come in, and we would hear the beeping of the bobcat. He would let the customers, I observed it, leave the lights on in the property, and the customer would use the bobcat to fill their own salt and sand and leave the property. This was all winter.
Okay, and at all times?
Yes, all times of the night. And he told, like, the police officer called him, and he said he was sanding for South Windsor. He was sanding for our town, and the police officer said that the contract, we have no contract with you to sand our roads. He said he was doing the town a favor by being out at night, sanding our roads.
Okay, so, I mean, I know that some, one of my, the guy who plows my yard also puts sand in my very steep driveway, so there are people who need sand, maybe it's not the town itself.
Yeah, I just, the hours of operation all night, with the beeping of the bobcat, you know, all hours of the night, so he did do that.
Thank you. Attorney Alter, I think you were anxious to respond to some of these comments?
Actually, not at all.
Okay. All right, well, that's all I have, thank you.
Commissioner LeBlanc?
Thank you. You have some great comments here, and I'm listening and absorbing as it comes down the line here, and it seems to me that this whole issue really comes down to process, and I'm looking for that air of compromise, and I'm not quite seeing it yet. Obviously, processing topsoil across the street was a win-win for everybody, and that's not available, I guess, at this point, but I understand Commissioner Wagner's a decimal level concern, the same here, I mean, I work in engineering, so I understand the concept of that, but the one question I have regarding the processing of topsoil is, do the decibels change? I never process topsoil by it already made, and I throw it in the back of a truck and I use it, but does the decimal level change depending on what you put through it, like a wood chipper? Wood chipper's are louder when you put different types of branches through it, whether it's pine or it's oak, for example, so does that process change depending on what you put through it?
So my experience is that if you have certain materials that have, for example, cobbles in it, larger stones, that until those are sorted out, and a trommel, it's a trommel screener, which means it's like a tub that goes around...
Right.
So that the larger material, the things that cannot be part of the topsoil manufacturer, the finished manufactured product, stay in the trommel and then have to be unloaded, and I suspect that that would be a time when, if there was a large amount of cobbles, there could be more noise than if it was compost being processed. So I think the answer is that it does depend on the kind of material that's put into the trommel, but the success that Mr. Silvestri has is based on the fact that he produces a really top-quality product, that people come a long way to get, because he has a formula of sand and soil and compost that he puts together, and he goes out of his way to get the right kinds of material to do that with, and so he avoids heavy, stones that are, soils that are heavy with stones and things like that, because it doesn't make good topsoil. So I think if that happens, it's more unusual than not, would be my expectation.
All right, thank you. Another comment I have is, I'm looking at these photos that were handed to us, and I realize some of these are dated, and I realize we have this clash between residential and industrial, and I believe that... and industrial, and I believe that in industrial, people should be good neighbors, too. And I'm looking at this picture, she has this one here that shows, brought in, that shows the height of materials being much higher than the separation between the two properties. I'd like to think that's not going on today, that this is something from the past. Is it still like that? Okay. Hey, I assume that that fence was put up as a barrier under a previous agreement or a leased proposal through planning and zoning, and that was meant to disguise or hide what's on the other side? Am I correct? So you're not seeing that today at this point either? Okay. Thank you. That's all I have right now. Thank you.
Commissioner Cavigano?
So I have just, well, one or two things. One of them was already touched upon and asked by Commissioner Wagner, and if there are any reported incidents or reports with this property and the related issues that were just mentioned. So I'll move on from that, and the only other comment that I had is the pictures that we received, like, we already know, is that the, most of these pictures, besides the last one, is from 2013, and what was just discussed is that I assume most of them, or the majority of them, the reason why they're from 2013 is that it just has not changed. Is that correct? From the orange folder that we received, I should specify.
These pictures were taken within the last-
Yep, this year, May.
These pictures were taken in 2021. First one is the streetscape with the sign, the company sign. Number two is the entrance driveway with the paved apron and then the gravel driveway next to it. Picture four is the driveway looking into the site from Strong Road. Number five is the edge of one of the bins that you can see in picture four. Picture five is the end of the bin that you see in picture four. Picture six is the building that is the store and conference room and office for the business. Number seven is to the rear, where some of the materials are stockpiled. Number eight is the roadway headed towards Route 5 along the stormwater detention basin, which you see the, I guess those are phragmites, growing to the right of the driveway. Number nine is the rear of the large building that we saw in an earlier picture. Number 10 is just a picture to show the screening of the taller arborvitae in front of the hoop house. Number 11 is a typical sand, Mason sand bin. Number 12 is the fence that separates the residents from the operation that you see in pictures 9, 10, and 11. That's between 275 Strong Road and 287. And then finally, number 13 is the residence at 275, looking from the construction site. The, I guess, number seven is the only place where you would see piles that existed back then, May or this summer. I, and I mean no disrespect to the people who submitted their pictures, but those are eight years old, and I think that Mr. Silvestri has had his site mature, trees have grown, screening is in place, and that the site, this is the site. It is what it is. So I don't, I don't mean that those pictures should be disregarded, but they're not representative of the site, at least as I saw it, when I went through it, within the last couple of weeks.
Mr. Chair, can I make a brief comment before? I'm sure you have a lot of comments.
Sure.
I would say that I saw the site in 2013, and I've seen it more recently, and I do think it's improved a lot. My take is that it's gonna look like a business that has piles of whatever that they sell, and that's just the nature of the business, and I'm less concerned about, you know, the look of the place. I'm more concerned about the impact on neighbors by their operations, so although the pictures from 2013 were not attractive, first of all, they're very old, and I really think they're not appropriate to consider at this time, but second of all, this is a business that makes piles of topsoil and gravel and whatever else, and that's their business, and they're gonna have to make piles of materials. So the look of the business, I think, is much improved, but still, there's gonna be piles of material, and that's the way it's gonna look. I'm, so I would focus anything you do to answer my previous comments on the, you know, the issues of the hours of operation, and making sure the noise is minimized for these residents.
Yeah, I have to agree. That's, I do want to stop by and look, I'll just, the appearance to me, like, I've been in there, and it looked really nice to me, just as a customer, but that's outside of this whole realm tonight, but I do want to stop in and see how it appears today, but again, as, not as concerned with that as I am with the process.
I don't know if Mr. Cavigano had finished his questions.
Yeah, Alan, you still have the floor, I believe.
That's it, that's all I just, I just wanted a clarification on the pictures, since I know they were eight years old. Thank you for showing the more updated photos to give more information. Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, it would appear that some additional information might be required?
Yeah, what I would like to do is get through the commissioners, in case there's any additional questions that need to be answered. Are you, you're all set for now? Okay. I want to go over a couple things. You know, the slamming tailgates, I understand what the process is, truck dumps, they pull forward to make the tailgate bang against it to complete emptying the truck. That's how you get a measured load. If that can be minimized as much as possible, I know the applicant's counsel has said that they'll approach them with that. Michelle, one of the residents mentioned, where's the required buffer zone? Is there a required buffer zone?
No, there's no required buffer. It's all industrial property surrounding this property.
I'm wondering if, and this might go back to the approval, if the applicant is in line with the previous approval conditions, specifically the fence along the CLMP border of the property?
Yeah, I'll have to check that. You know, if you recall, the original approval, the applicant was trying to obtain permission to use that access point.
Right.
And I just have to go back and check and see if, how it was closed off, whether it was a fence or buried.
When we went out and looked at it, I don't believe we had any maps to, or to show us where the fence is, or where it was supposed to be, and, you know, nothing to compare-
It doesn't show up on the plans, yeah. I'll research that for you.
Okay, thank you. I, I know we, whenever there's trucks talked about, are the trucks subject to sound regulations? My previous recollection is trucks are not subject to the sound regulations. Can somebody confirm that?
I believe that's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll provide you with a copy of the noise ordinance, which will-
Okay.
-give you those details.
And I'd just like that specific answer.
It may depend on how the trucks are being used, so sometimes they may be subject to town ordinance, or noise ordinances, at other times, they may not be. For example, I know the backup alarms are not subject to noise ordinances.
Okay. There was talk about a leased property. Do you know if that lease has been signed or ratified?
It's my understanding from my client that no contract or lease has been tendered to date.
That's my understanding from the Public Works Department, that lease has not been signed.
And the other information that I was provided is that it's expected to be no more, for no more than a one-year period. I think somebody mentioned more than that, but-
It would be interesting if, and I know you said you were gonna do this check with other departments to see if there's been complaints. I know what Planning and Zoning does at their hearings is, we ask residents to come forward and send any complaints they have when they are given to Planning and Zoning. So the police might have a complaint, but that doesn't necessarily get to Planning and Zoning. That's not under, really, the police's purview unless it really becomes an issue. We have had some applicantations where the police have come forward to us, but that happens few and far between. Just so I have an understanding going forward, what I'm hearing is they are proposing to do the actual screening of the material from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM, but the material will still be loaded and moved with trucks during normal business hours, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. It does sound like we need a few answers. What I'd like to do is keep the public hearing open for further information, and once we get that information-
We could go to October 12th would be your next meeting date? Does that sound-
We, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you, Michelle.
October 12th would be the next meeting date?
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, could I just recap what you're looking for to make sure that I don't miss something?
Sure.
I think you've asked Michelle to look into complaints from any part of the town, Health Department, Police Department, Zoning Enforcement.
Any of that's available, yes.
Okay. Also, to look into the status of whether or not the town property leases, or what the status of that is, and what its terms might be if it is, I-
Well, I think that she can confirm that, but I think that's already been established, that it hasn't been executed.
And then you also asked if trucks are regulated with respect to sound. That would be a matter, I assume that you would want the planner to secure for you. And then obviously, it sounded also like some commissioners intended to make a site visit, and that could be done either because you schedule it, or they go individually, as long as they go by themselves. I think that's okay, they, I'm sure your commission knows the rules about not talking to anybody, just look around, and whatever information needs to be made known at the public hearing, not-
Right, no experte communication.
And we will tell our client the same thing, that if commissioners are on site, he should not engage.
And also, if, just with all due respect to the neighbors, if commissioners go on site, they're not supposed to take any input from the neighbors, which isn't in a formal meeting setting or a design meeting setting that people are invited to. It has to be an open public meeting. So it's not that commissioners are trying to ignore you, it's just, we have a purview we have to stick to.
Mr. Chairman, in addition, I think I will gather some information regarding this question of whether or not people are picking up sand in the midst of winter storms outside of the hours of operation. That was a question that seemed to be asked. And then, I guess, the town planner will look at the 2009 plan to see if there was a fence that should be somewhere where it isn't.
Okay.
I had one other thing, I think.
Commissioner Wagner?
Thank you. In some, you know, you look around, you drive down some of the highways, and you see these big fences that they put up that are really designed to mitigate the noise. Personally, I question how effective they are, but I would like to have you consider whether a fence could be put up that would mitigate the noise, at least the impact on number 307. I don't think there's much you can do across the street, but, and if you have an opinion from your engineers to whether that's even effective, in addition to the question of whether a fence was required, is it, could it also be a tool to mitigate the noise on 307?
Commissioners, is there anything else?
Yeah, if we go to the site, I mean, do we, can we, like, I think the Bamber family's at 315, and then Jackson's are at 306, and then 307 is the direct about her? I mean, if we could stand in their driveway or whatever, but-
I don't think the applicant has any objection to that, or not the applicant, the resident.
It's not my property.
Yeah, okay. Anything else, commissioners? Okay, would somebody extend or continue the public hearing to our next scheduled meeting?
I move we continue the public hearing to the October 12 meeting.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second? We have a motion and a second? All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, now, we are at 10 o'clock, and we still have one public hearing, so if the public could leave quietly, we would appreciate it, and we're gonna try and do this one as quickly as possible, which is Application 21-47P. Do we have somebody here to represent the applicant?
Is this mine?
Revolution's Outdoor Field Expansion.
Yep. Good evening. Doug Nation, South Winds Entertainment.
You can tip that up, Dougie.
What?
You can raise that up a little.
Yeah.
We'll hear you better.
I'm taller than those other ones. Doug Nation, South Winds Entertainment. Michelle and I have been in discussions about taking up some of the parking lot behind, I don't have a picture of it, but I think you all have a packet with a picture of what we're trying to accomplish, and we're looking at taking up some of the parking spaces behind Revolution's and putting an outside field. Currently, we have four volleyball courts, and we're a part of an organization called WACA, which is a young professionals, it's a young professionals group that they come out Monday through Saturday, and they play volleyball every night, and they also have a kickball and soccer league that they run out of, down in Hartford. They kind of want to pull out of their Hartford place and move it over to Revolution, so we're trying to provide them the fields and everything to do it.
Okay, is that complete my presentation?
Well, my presentat, I thought, I don't really have anything, I mean, I got a- I mean, I got the map that we've discussed. You have the map. You have the, I wrote a narrative. I believe that you have the narrative.
Yep.
Not big on public speaking, but I can answer any quick questions you guys might have, or slow questions.
Okay, well, we'll get to you in a minute. Right now, we'll turn to our town staff, our Director of Planning, Commissioner LeWright.
Thank you. So this is a request for a one-year temporary conditional permit to allow the creation of two multipurpose fields for soccer fields and/or kickball, and associated parking located at 195 Governor's Highway, behind the Revolutions Bowling and Lounge Facility that's at 60 Bidwell Road in the industrial zone. Outdoor recreation is permitted by special exception in the industrial zone. The Revolution site was previously approved for outdoor recreation. The applicant is seeking to convert an area of this existing parking area at 195 adjacent to the building to expand these outdoor activities. At the time that the Planning and Zoning approved the Revolutions Outdoor Recreation, there was a portion of this site that was gonna be used for overflow parking. That portion is part of what would be now covered with fields, so the applicant will be addressing parking with a future application. So just what the applicant's looking to do at this point is to create a 240 by 400-foot area by removing the pavement and replacing with six inches of topsoil to create these fields. Other improvements is minor grading, and I've been talking with the applicant about creating some kind of barrier along the fenced area that they will be going up against, because that is an industrial parking area and, you know, work area out and back there. So looking to have some kind of screening, as well as maintaining truck access around the perimeter of the building. There may be some slight changes, some fenced areas and gates that will be looked at. So the parking needs have not been specifically addressed with this application, although there are two locations that the applicant has under their control. One would be immediately adjacent, and that would be behind the Bank of America building. That's all part of the same property there. There's an area that could be created into parking, as well as there's another lot on Bidwell Road that could be created into parking. So as part of what the applicant would be requested to do over the next year is to come in and formalize site plans for these off-site parking locations, as well as formalizing the use on this industrial piece. The reason we're handling this temporary conditional is to try to get the applicant to be able to get the seed, get the ground seeded this fall, so that it could be used next spring and summer. The wording of the temporary conditional permit is that the permits may be granted by the commission for a period not to exceed two years. Such approval may be given after a public hearing. If in the judgment of the commission, the public convenience and welfare will be substantially served, appropriate use of neighboring property will not be substantially or permanently injured, and traffic and other hazards will not result from such use. If this application is approved, we recommend that the applicant come in with formal site plans to the Planning and Zoning and/or inland wetlands for approval of the parking areas, as well as formalizing the recreation use by special exception. Just a note for the record, we have not had any concerns about the Bidwell outdoor activities expressed into our office, so hopefully that would be the same here.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Turn to our town engineer, Jeff Doolittle.
Thank you. I'm all for pulling up pavement to create fields or other pervious surface. I think that's beneficial for everybody. I guess my question is, process, as you would say. This area, if four inches of material is removed from this area, that's over 1,000 yards, so I assume they would move 1,000 yards or more or less of asphalt and replace it with 1,000 yards of topsoil. So I guess my question is, where is the asphalt going? Where is the topsoil coming from to get this to happen?
Okay.
Are you looking to immediately answer that question?
Okay. Well, at this time, I'll turn to the public. Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak in favor of this application? Hearing and seeing none, is there anyone who would like to speak against? Or has questions or concerns? Hearing and seeing none, I'll turn to commissioners, Commissioners Cavatnerow.
I have a few questions, just looking at the map very quickly. There's no key on the map, so I'm curious, is there a distinction between the red text and the yellow text that you have on the map? I'm just trying to unravel it for myself here.
The red text is just the labels we put on it. The yellow are contours, existing contours. This is a town GAS map.
Okay. Next question. I see that the existing volleyball field is labeled that it'll be lit. And with the volleyball and kickball leagues for the field, is there, and this is for the, for the applicant at the podium here, is there any eventual plans for this field to be lit? Because like I said, the existing volleyball field is lit, I'm just, I'm just curious.
Yeah, the volleyball field is lit, and there's existing parking lot lights on the parking lot. So those are gonna probably stay and have to be adjusted and moved around, because there's islands in the middle that are gonna come out, so those lights will probably come to the outside to get a little coverage. We're not looking to make this a, like a football stadium, bright lights and everything else. It's more of a, you know, a kickball league and everything else. So it's gonna be pretty much the same ambient light that a parking lot gives off. We're not gonna do anymore.
Okay, yeah, I just knew that the lights would have to move around within that lot. My final question is, it mentions that sprinklers will be in use. During hours of operation, and even when the facility's closed, for example, when would the sprinklers be in use?
In the morning, 5:00 in the morning. Sprinklers come on to water the lawns. That's what time they come on now at Revolutions.
All right, thank you, no further comment.
Okay, Commissioner LeBlanc?
Thank you. I don't have any comment, I think this is a great idea, but it seems pretty straightforward to me. I like it.
Yeah, it's good, thank you.
Commissioner Wagner?
No questions.
Commissioner Foley?
No questions.
Commissioner Bonzani?
No question.
Commissioner Dexter?
Again, no questions.
Okay. And I see the letter about the parking. Do we have something to cover us if the parking is ever needed again? How do we address that, Michelle?
When we come in and formalize the use by special exception, you'll find that the parking that exists out on site is in excess of the parking requirements by several hundred spaces.
Yeah.
So there'll have to be compliance with, and I think you'll find that's easily done. And then in the future, if it ever were to need to be have parking again, it could easily be converted back into parking.
I could assure you that if there was a need for parking, there'd be, we'd put parking back. They had 80-something employees, I think, move out of there in the front office space, and there's no one, I think they're running out of staff, about 75 people right now, and...
I know I drive by
It's a pretty empty lot most days.
Very frequently, and that lot is pretty barren with cars. I know the back lot has more cars, but even that's not utilized to its full extent. Okay. So is there, Michelle, you made one comment at the end of your, was there some information missing, or?
No, it's just that, it's just that we don't have formal applications for the parking, and we do have requirements for off-site parking. And particularly, one property does have a water course, and will be, in the upland review area, will be subject to a wetlands approval. So it's just simply a statement that those parking applications will need to be submitted over the next year, so that they're in place at the time these open.
Fair enough, okay. Commissioners, any reason to keep the public hearing open? Hearing, staff, applicant, you're all set? Okay, then we'll close the public hearing. Well, before we close the public hearing, when you, it's not on for action tonight, but maybe we could act on that one item if, if the commissioners are... What?
Yeah, we need to get the grass planted, right?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it is the growing season if it's gonna get done. Okay, so we'll close the public hearing at 10:13 PM. And I'd like to see the... Michelle, could we handle Application 21-46P in October? Okay. Would the commission be willing to extend the public hearing just to move the Revolutions application forward? Could I have a motion on that?
We'll extend the meeting till 10:25.
Even 10:20? No, that's fine. We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second? Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Those opposed, motion passes. Okay.
Do you have a discussion?
Yeah, I, I'm confused about something. So, Southwoods Entertainment, 21-46P, is for the Haunted Walk, which according to the narrative is already started. Right, so we should, no, vote on that tonight, so that he's in compliance?
Uh, yeah, which was a date on that.
Yeah, 9/25. Well, I, I don't know, I just wanted to bring that up.
Well, okay. How about we just address this, the Revolutions one first? And if we have time with the 10:25 that Commissioner Wagner allotted, we'll look at that. Okay. So, Michelle, you don't have anything else to add, correct?
No, I do not.
Okay.
I do not, I did give you some draft approval conditions on the flip side of your...
Yep, okay. So commissioners, a motion would be in order, and then we can discuss the motion if there's...
I'd like to make a motion to approve Application 21-47P, Revolutions Outdoor Field Expansion Temporary and Conditional.
Okay, just one thing, the application number is, I think, incorrect. So I just wanna make sure that we got 21-47P on our agenda, and then the standard approval says 20-13P if I'm... Okay, thank you. So just correct that on the... Okay, sorry, Michael, please go.
All right, we have, can I read all four comments, Michelle? Okay, all right. Standard approval modification is temporary and conditional approval for Application 20-13P. The first one, this is a one-year temporary...
21-47P.
Okay, all right, so that is 21-47P.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. This one-year temporary and condition permit will expire on September 28th, 2022. It must be renewed before that time if the use is to continue. Number two, if there are buildings, structures, signs, and other items that require a building permit or other town approvals or permits, such approvals or permits must be obtained prior to construction or use of the site. All freestanding signs and/or building signs require the issuance of a signed permit before they are erected. Number three, parking for this use is allowed onsite only or in approved parking lots. The applicant's plan for additional on-adjacent properties must be submitted to the IWA and PZC approval. The lots shall be constructed prior to the use of the fields to expand the parking area. A plan must be submitted to town staff for review and approval. Number four, during the one-year permit period, applications shall file site plan approvals for the proposed parking areas under Section 6.14, off-site parking facilities, as well as a special exception site plan modification for the expansion of the outdoor recreation use associated with the existing Revolutions approval.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second? Any discussion? Questions, comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion passes unanimously. Okay, we do have a few minutes left, and I apologize for keeping everybody here so late. Just wanna try and get through this. Could we have a motion to act on Application 21-? Yeah, 40... 46P? Oh, okay, 21-46P.
Motion? Can I make a motion? I'll make a motion. To approve Application 21-46P, Nightmare Acres Haunted Walk. The two-year, number one, the two-year temporary and conditional permit for the Haunted Walk will expire on September 28th, 2023, two-year max. Number two, adequate nighttime lighting shall be added to ensure patron safety. When off-site parking is being utilized, security personnel must be present across patrons.
Yep.
This crossing location on Governor's Highway must be coordinated with the Traffic Division within Police Services. Number three, if there are buildings, structures, signs, or other items that require a building permit or other town approvals, permits, all such approvals or permits must be obtained prior to construction or use of the site. And lastly, a food permit is required from the Health Department for the sale of beer or wine.
Okay, we have a motion, if we could hold that thought for a minute? And I apologize to our town staff, as I did not give you a chance to do your presentation.
No, there's really no, nothing to add, other than the applicant does not put an end on to the hour. Speaking with them, they don't go past 11:00 or 11:30 typically. I think in the narrative, they said they would take all customers until they...
That was a comment I was thinking of, too.
So I think we would be done by the, by 11:30, I think is what you'd said.
Okay. And again, my apologies.
No, that's fine, perfectly fine.
Town engineer, anything?
No additional comments.
Okay, thank you very much. So we do have an app, motion to approve, and we do have a second. Any discussion, questions, comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion passes.
Thank you.
Good luck. Okay.
I move adjourned.
Yeah, that one's still open to Kilkenny Heights, I believe? Is it? Did we, no, we closed that one, but we're gonna, another night.
Can I just hand out what I was gonna give you under the other items, so you can have it for the next meeting and look at it?
Yes, please.
Okay, so what I'm gonna give you is the draft text amendment for the cannabis retail that was sent off to CROG. A copy for you, I'm gonna give you a draft of the accessory apartment regulation that I worked on. You'll note what's in red is not what the law says. So black is what the law says, red is what we're proposing. And then the third thing I'm gonna give you is a draft text amendment related to this residential moratorium. I did work with our town attorney on this a little bit back and forth, and here's a draft for consideration. So I will give all three of those out, and we will put them on at our next meeting for discussion.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Woody's Hot Dogs. I like Woody's. We're still live. Okay, so... No, whatever you... You got three minutes. No. Another night, stop it. Is he, I can't even see him. Okay. So we're... I'm not sure if there's a lot of discussion on Kill Kilkenny Heights, but I, I think we should reserve that for another night. I don't think it's anything that's gotta be decided tonight, correct? Okay. Not Kill Kilkenny, I believe Stone and Gravel we left open, correct?
Southwoods Stone Landscaping is left open...
South Winds Stone Landscaping is left open, Kill Kenny was closed.
Yeah.
That's correct.
Okay, so a motion to adjourn would be in order?
Second.
Well, somebody's gotta make a motion.
Oh, oh, I thought, my, my bad.
You can make the motion, Alan.
Well, I make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, do we have a second? Well, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes unanimously, thank you.